And so as far as I know, we're starting.
Morning, everyone. We'll call the Montgomery County planning commission for Wednesday, May eighth to order. Uh, let the record show that we do have a farm in the room uh with Bob Blue online and here awaiting Obed and Dan uh to join us. Uh with that or any board comments before we get started? Anybody in the room?
Um, I'm sorry, Stephen. I just want to thank uh Scott and a couple of other members of the board that attended a an event out in Lansdale last week. It was a bicycle fixing station that is dedicated as part of our living mill trail. So it's nice to see that we got that as part of a twenty forty grant uh program that's been crossing, which I think we saw this very much needed the road we were at the other. But uh, essentially, I thank the board for showing up.
So the Monaco twenty forty grant, what year was that?
Uh eighteen twenty two.
I thought it was twenty 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 one.
It was twenty two, actually. Yeah, it was uh. Yeah.
Hey, we do a weekend. Not so much on some of the other grades that you people.
I'll mark that. I'll mark that down in my book.
I would also like to comment and thank uh Scott for his mening.
This is me.
Okay, the um the celebration for the preservation of camp laughing water. Um, uh, that for those who don't know, it was the Earl South Camp and then um in New Hanover and Upper Frederick. It's a project that no one knows exactly how long it didn't start in pre-start times, but um it was the comments were two thousand seven that began. I know that the conversations on protecting that property went way, way before that. It is four hundred and fifteen, fourteen?
Fifty eight.
Fifty eight um acres. It's a wonderful piece of open space along Swamp Creek. Um, and we worked, the county was diligent, not only responsible in funding it with a but diligent in working with natural lands to come to a solution that would work for the Girl Scouts who were very, very adamant about protecting the safety of their girls when they're there um camping and programmed. But we did find a solution that is good for both public access and protection and encouragement of what goes on in that uh community of scouty, which is wonderfully managed and very vibrant. So Montgomery County now has uh almost five hundred acres of preserved open space along the Swamp Creek to add to its almost twelve hundred acres of preserved open space along the um the song called Unami in the other part of our western county where the Boy Scouts camp has been preserved. So Bravo County, County uh Planning Commission, Bravo, Montgomery County, um we have uh Commissioner Babela there, and it was a great win to be celebrated and enjoyed for generations. Thank you.
And as a word comments, five, any quick news? Okay, I'm gonna bring up one thing on.
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that um Mr. Nemroff is stuck in traffic. He is on his way.
Okay.
And also, we have numerous guests here uh this morning online. Uh Pearl Flamber, Kim H G, and partners of ours from the Partnership TMA, Jackie Baxter-Rollins and Lucas Ash.
Great. Um, bottom four comment I'll make is uh by May sixteenth at ten AM at Crestmont Community Center, Penn Best, which I am a board member, will have a open house uh discussion on the one billion dollars of funding that they provide each year in low interest loans for water quality projects such as stormwater, sewer replacement, lead line, PFAS and PFAS um projects. And also water main projects throughout the state of Pennsylvania, uh integrated rates of loans. You know, from two and a half percent lower, and in some cases, depending on the community, um they could get great money. That some of that money can be granted. Uh, that's a ten AM at Crestmont Community Centers, open to anybody. Um, there's Scott through planning commission has been advertising it and the state reps and state senators and Montgomery County. But it is in my mind, as a board member, underutilized funds or underutilized program and uh we were um, if you get the information out there, I think it's great for the communities in Montgomery County to take that. And also private, private companies or private individuals can also apply for money, uh such as you know, Temple's got brands, uh farm, some farms are using the money for a scoreboard management. Um, uh, proponent erosion into water sheds. So uh, it'd be great if you have any relationship to a community, whether it's an engineer, county, um municipality, or even showing up. So with that, no more board comments. We'll uh pull up approval of more meeting minutes. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the regular monthly board meeting minutes of April tenth, two thousand twenty four? So Lou, Lou, your second, second, Lou, the second comments correction of meeting minutes for board members. Seeing none or there any negative votes to approving the meeting minutes? I'm understated because I wasn't there, but I read the minutes. Thank you. Do you know any other comments or extensions? I see none before meeting is approved. Or any public comment? Any public comment? Anybody in the room? Staff or public? Any public comment online?
No.
Hello? Yep. Please uh please provide us with your name and the municipality presided.
I'm Pearl Flamber. I live in Wit paint, but I work in Norristown, a block from the Aerie Street Prison. And I have a couple about the the about the prison. Should I wait until after Mr. Francis's um presentation?
Uh, you'll be given an opportunity at that point. It's up to you whether you want to make that comment now or you want to wait until the agenda comes up.
Um, well, maybe I'll just make it now and I would like to thank Mr. Francis for his presentation to the county commissioners back on April fourth. Uh, we're very encouraged to hear that you understand the significance of the prison building and hope to see it repurposed. Uh, we are also happy for the intention of transparency in the process. Uh, a page for, excuse me, prison updates on the planning commission website would be helpful. We would also like to ask about the full structural assessment that was mentioned. Um, a firm was going to be chosen from an enabled vendors list. Uh, can you update us? Uh, maybe you're already planning to as part of today's presentation. We're wondering, has the firm been chosen? Can we receive a copy of the contract? Um, the value of the contract, the scope of the contract, when the work will begin and when the report might arrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we appreciate your comment. Any other question? And questions related to those comments will be handled during the presentation. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we move on to our first agenda item, which is electric vehicles planning guide and I'll call on John Lusher and Matt Popek. Such an unlikely team.
The twin, the twin towers of planning. Let's give it to our. I'm more of the David Robinson. I'll be the Admiral. This is my Tim Duncan.
Morning, John. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you? Um, my name is John Lusher. I am the environmental planning assistant manager. Um, today we are going to talk to you about a project that is in its very beginning stages. The purpose of this conversation is to be a conversation. I'm not presenting you stuff that we have done for you to comment on. I am presenting you stuff that we would like you to do for you to comment on and to get your insight and opinions. Um, we're if I could speak, um, we're going to talk about electric vehicles and especially the infrastructure um in Montgomery County and the role that the planning commission can have with our municipalities, with our stakeholders in that infrastructure that's necessary for the transition to electric vehicles. Um, we are going to talk about the mapping that is associated with this work to be able to give our stakeholders the idea of geographical locations and um where they might be appropriate to place this infrastructure. Uh, the municipal issues that our stakeholders are facing. Um, we're going to talk about our work developing a EV model ordinance to help tackle the issues that we are facing and where they could go. And then we want to talk to you about what this product may look like and get your insight on that. At any point during this conver my presentation, this conversation, feel free to chime in. There are going to be times where I'm going to put you on the spot and ask for your input. We're going to go very elementary school style. I might point at people. I have a laser pointer. I'll try not to hit you in the eye. Um, Matt Popek is my Tim Duncan will be taking notes. Um, he's also a lot smarter than me. So if there are questions that I cannot answer, Matt's gonna hop in and uh be able to chime in.
I appreciate the uh offer to chime in anytime.
I I didn't feel like I would enable you. You would do it anyway, but this way you feel.
I was afraid of not being able to do that.
I I I will not shush you. I may have to guide you a little bit forward, but I will not shush you.
All right. Oh, do I get to?
No, I got it.
Oh, you're not so bad. There we go. All right. Even though I am the tallest, the baldest and the loudest of the group, um, this is going, this project is a team effort. Um, from the turn, you can see we have multiple sections working on this because this is something that is a very holistic issue. Um, from transportation, our fearless leader is actually Matt Edmund. He is uh, he is actually the boss of this. So when everything, when everything is awesome, he's going to take all the credit. If there's things that you don't like, it's going to be my fault. That's usually how it works. Um, Tim Duncan, to my right, is uh is working on this project as well. Uh, it is ex- extremely important that we get the community perspective on the issues that they are facing and how this is going to work. So from community planning, we have Tim and Margot who are working on the um throughout the whole project, but mostly focusing on the model ordinance end of it. And then none of this would be possible without our graphics and design team. Um, Kevin Chavu, Robert and Anastasia doing the design, both of how these are implemented from an EV infrastructure standpoint, and then also the mapping and making it look awesome at the end.
John is also on the team, even if his name is not.
Nope, I am doing nothing. I am, I'm like a paint actor. This is like a QVC thing. I've just come up and talked about it and then I go away. So I think I'm preaching to the choir here. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I wanted to give us some definitions and some perspective of what EVs are. Um, this is from our draft model ordinance and then our EVSE, the electric vehicle supply equipment. These are the chargers that we are dealing with. Um, just so we are aware, there are, at this point, commonly referred to as three levels. Level one is the type that you um can very easily plug in at your house. Um, level two are a charger a little bit faster. These are what we are commonly seeing as publicly accessible charging. Uh, because the infrastructure, the electrical make ready is not as intensive as it is for the DC fast charging, which is, as you is in the name. It's the fastest charging. It is probably the most effective. You can move in, move out. You can see the charging times and rates. Um, but it is exceptionally, can be exceptionally expensive to install. That is the downside to that at this point. So um, as we talk about it, level one, home, level two, faster, usually the most publicly accessible. Level three is the ideal, but we are running into uh cost issues when we talk about implementation of level three. So the context of what we're doing, why are we doing this? Why are we tackling EVs and EV infrastructure at the planning commission? First of all, it fits into our existing comprehensive plan. Monaco twenty forty calls for a green, resilient um str- uh infrastructure network. We want to improve transportation quality. It is part of our work program. We are fulfilling our mission as from with Monaco twenty forty. Um, Monaco twenty fifty, if we are in the beginning stages of that, if I had to guess, I'm going to think that EVs are going to be part of the conversation around Monaco twenty fifty. Um, this is something that is vitally uh important to our municipalities, to our stakeholders. So it will fit into both our existing comprehensive plan and my assumption is it will be addressed in Monaco twenty fifth. So this isn't just from a regulatory standpoint. Really, the driver is the market. If you haven't noticed, there's a lot of EVs out there. You know, there are, you know, in twenty twenty one, there were three thousand six hundred sixty EVs registered in the county. That number has increased. We will get updated numbers as they come through PENDA. Um, and we have over three hundred publicly accessible charging stations in the county. Now, this is, these are numbers that are just increasing. Um, we are seeing that manufacturers are diverting their production lines to EVs more and more. So this is something that are, you know, from our municipalities to our residents, to our businesses, this is something that they are looking for guidance to do. Um, we are also talking about Penn Best and some of the funding that's available. You know, there is a significant amount of funding that is becoming available through the I H A and other federal funding sources to put in publicly accessible charging infrastructure. And the municipalities are asking, well, where do we put them? We can get the money, but where do we use it and where do we use it most effectively? And this is the, some of the questions that we were trying to answer. Um, you know, we have seven municipalities so far that have enacted EV ordinances. Um, we promote them and we assume that this number is only going to grow um as we look to new development and redevelopment and how EV infrastructure can be placed in there. So we recently had a study done for us, per for it by DVR PC looking at the issue of EV infrastructure in the county. Um, that's where we've gotten a lot of our data. But they focused on the issue of multi, the correlation between EV infrastructure and multifamily housing. The biggest eighty percent of charging occurs at home. There are a lot of people who do not have a driveway, who do not have a garage to be able to easily access level one charging. That is a huge barrier. We have these multifamily units. We have, I'm somebody who lives in Philadelphia, Rojo. I do not have a garage. I do not have a driveway. You know, where can people, people like me, tall, bald dudes who want an electric vehicle, how can I charge it? So DVR PC did a study of the county and was looking at the existing infrastructure distance to existing infrastructure by municipality, where the average person, and we have this, we can provide you the the study to look at. I just threw the maps up to give you an idea of where we are contextually, where our starting point was. Um, and then multifamily, the distance from there. Um, they also did, which was interesting for us, they looked at county owned facilities and the distance between county owned facilities, existing infrastructure and multifamily. Are there opportunities on county owned facilities to be able to start, start to tackle that eighty percent? You know, are they within a half mile, a quarter mile of these multifamily? They did a ranking and a matrix for us. Um, and we actually used that study to get grant funding to do uh publicly accessible EV infrastructure project. It has not been officially approved yet by EPA. We're hoping to hear that in uh late June, early July. But, you know, we've already been able to take the DVR PC study and use it to apply for grant funding. Um, this has also been kind of the building block and the impetus for us to be able to say, this was cool. But how can we use something like this and really help our municipalities? So we had to talk about mapping. People are wondering where this should go. Using the DVR PC study, this is the type of data we have. We know where the existing public level two and DC fast charging are. We have an EV registration density. We know where people have the vehicles. We have from CoStar's data, we know where our multifamily is. We know where these difficult housing units are that would, that are really in need of publicly accessible. Um, and then we have um this data, the forty or more predicted paid charging events per square mile. That was something that DVR PC was able to acquire from the University of California, Berkeley. Um, it's kind of a snapshot of time through their methodology of where they think those charging events may occur. Um.
What is that? Explain to me what this pre, this paid charging event is.
So that is where they used, I don't know the whole methodology of where Cal Berkeley, but they were able to figure out based on EV registration, existing, the existing infrastructure, where they think people would pay a predictor of where they think people would, would use publicly accessible infrastructure.
Events.
Uh, events, plug it in.
Oh, oh, I see. It's not, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, 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 no. There's no balloon. There's, there's no piñatas. It's like, yeah, yeah.
So along those lines, the good matrix to look at is, you know, charging at home is around twenty three cents per kilowatt. Charging at a charging station, whether it either be a level two or level three, you're talking about twice as much and sometimes a little bit more if they're for charging at peak, peak times. So there is a huge difference between, and the economics are huge if you're working from charging at home, the twenty three cents per kilowatt, as opposed to charging publicly at forty six plus.
And then I will get into, that is good foreshadowing. I haven't gone to that slide yet, but that does run into a bit of an equity issue.
Right.
You know, uh, those, those who have and the, by having have like driveways, garages, those suburban homes versus those who do, who have not, you know, and who have to pay more to be able to do a charging event.
Right. John, if I could just jump in real quick. So there's, there's, there's two issues that are floating out there in the work that we're doing. And one is, um, how do you deal with charging in people's homes, what we just kind of talked about a couple of seconds ago? Uh, if you don't have a garage, but also then publicly, you know, if you're out and about, how do you make sure that like gas stations are everywhere? But where's the electric equivalent of that? And that's what that last point tries to help us start to get to in our work is, you know, um, PENDA has NEVI funds, um, National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure. It's a big grant program. And that's been focusing on interchanges, but there may be places other than air changes where this stuff needs to go, and that's part of our focus too.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's part of the discussion as well, but then layering onto that, the reliability issue of showing up the chargers that are not working versus, you know, you can get gas. I mean, we, we have a pretty robust reliability in the, in the fuel system these days, although at times it has been an issue. There's a lot of reliability issues with chargers.
Yes.
I don't have any of the, I know very little about this. Is the same plug for each type of vehicle that we use?
That's all the other issue.
Tesla's one kind and the other US manufacturers are another kind, essentially.
Well, then the Japanese manufacturers are still using the old channel plug, which is supposedly going to go away.
Just, so then what, what do you have at a station? You have three different plugs?
Now, so if you go to Tesla, if you go to a Tesla, if you go to Tesla chargers, they have the NAX plug, which is only, which is only used by Tesla, now starting to become, now starting to be rolled out in a lot of America, a lot of cars in America. So for instance, Ford has just switched over all of their vehicles to NAX plugs. And they have sent adapters to all of their current owners that have the old timey plugs to that, to the, to the NAX chargers. There are several other manufacturers throughout the next year will be switching over to the NAX and, and opening up to Tesla charging system. So, but a lot of, other than Tesla, those vehicles produced before this year were either on J seven seventeen seventy two, which is for the CCS, which is for DC fast charging.
So what would be a station that we're talking about here?
Well, that's a whole, you know, that's, that gets into a whole nother conversation, I think, really.
So far, this is still a private sector issue that is trying to get worked out and everybody's slowly consolidating around a particular standard. The, the public sector has just been more involved in making sure that the infrastructure in the first place, with the electric power is there. Um, kind of similarly, it's been a private sector issue in terms of reliability and there hasn't been a big push for the government to come in, you know, Bureau of Ways and Measures or whatever it is, is still regulating gas stations. I'm not sure there's too much interest or influence in that from a local government. Yeah, not saying that it can happen and won't happen by twenty fifty, but it's been more of a we're just letting the companies work it out and the government has been more involved with the funding for the initial placement of them. It's not too much of the follow up afterwards.
But the plug situation is slowly going to get itself worked out, but it will take some time. And there's also with the public charging stations, a push to provide both types of plugs on charging stations as more cars vibrate to that NAX system. But that will take time. I, I wanted to bring up one other point because one infrastructure is a huge deal and Nicole talked about it. Forget about reliability, charging stations is huge. However, getting the charging stations and having the power infrastructure, and I'll leave you with one thought is to charge your car at home is requires twenty five times more power to charge your car than it does to operate the refrigerator in the car. So now, that doesn't necessarily mean your, your house is going to blow up because you're using that much, you're taking that much more power. But if you imagine that more cars that get rolled out and more people using own chargers and charging their cars, how much more power is going to be required to support just public, private charging as opposed, and the problem with trying to get public chargers to the electric infrastructure. And that's a whole, that's a whole issue, part of some of the funding that's been out there for D O A and also state funding for public private utilities.
And the public utilities are aware, and I think that's why as more are going to start coming online, the differentiation between daytime power use and nighttime power use is probably going to become that much bigger. Um, the East Coast utilities are probably going to have to follow in the footsteps of what California and others have done already, where you have much more penetration and saturation of electric vehicle markets. Pico's aware of all this stuff, but hasn't quite seen the need to jump onto it yet. It's been able to fit within their overall um interconnection power use.
So I can leave you with that number of like twenty five times more than the refrigerators is a huge deal when you start to like, you know, right now I may be the only person within my block that's charging an electric vehicle. But in five or six years, if that becomes ninety percent of the people, well, now all of a sudden the power needs for that grid or for that section of the grid, you know, it grows exponentially. And if you can imagine that all down the line, how, how that becomes an issue or a concern for the public facilities.
We're having that conversation now in Lansdale.
Yeah.
Since we are a, a power provider, you know, how to provide peated or is it non-peated rate segments for charging.
Right.
I mean, this is such a complex issue in the fact that it's so market driven. It is, and holistically, you look at things like the power grid and yeah, and what PJM and Pico are going to have to do to support the electrification of our fleet along with the electrification that we've been talking about of a lot of our buildings and our way of operating, you know, which is beyond the scope and the power of the planning commission, but we still have a role in the idea of placing the infrastructure along with things about renewable energy, things about energy conservation in our buildings, all, it all ties together and it's real messy. But we are, you know, the goal, my, my vision for this product moving forward is we're not going to have all the answers to every question yet. But if we have the best information that we have and we can guide our municipalities and our stakeholders in the best way possible at this moment, even if it's just, this is an issue. We have to be aware of it. Let's move forward in a, you know, in the most sustainable and educated way possible. I think we've done our job as a planning commission. So.
And I think you're right. I think looking at the macro problems is far beyond the the scope of what I think Montgomery County Planning Commission, or even Montgomery County for that matter, can really weigh in on it because some of these issues are much larger and um, but I think if focusing on what we've, some of the things you've already talked about, which is, you know, model ordinance is for townships to understand, you know, when they should be requiring level two, when they should be requiring DC fast chargers and where and how that connects to usage. I think looking at cooperative, cooperative uh charging locations or neighborhoods that, for neighborhoods and allowing those neighborhoods within a certain distance in. Allowing those neighborhoods within a certain distance in those, to those cooperative charging stations to reap the benefits of. The normal residential rate. Whereas if you're outside of that distance, then you're paying, you know, the, the higher rate because that allows. You know, if you had, yeah, if you have parking lots, let's say in Lawrence Town, if you have a lot of row homes, if you had a public parking lot. And you set up a cooperative charging location and anybody in that neighborhood that's within a certain distance. Of that public charging gets to charge at, at twenty three cents for per, per kilowatt hour. If you're outside of that charging station, then you pay the normal rate of forty six cents, whatever it may be.
So that would be very interesting and that's something we're having, starting to have conversations. Um, because we do have this grant funding to do publicly accessible charging in Northstown. Um, and that would be an interesting conversation with the third party vendors who would be. Developing these charging stations. I wonder if you could do it, and this is complete speculation, you know, when you run your card, you have to put in your zip code. So it may be zip code based of like, oh, you're. You know, you're the for one nine four oh four, whatever it may be, like you get the discounted rate. It's connected to your card, which you need to charge. And then outside of those neighboring zip codes. And I wonder if there's a way to be able to do that, to handle that L M I issue in those.
And it's a similar discussion with one in a lot of the inner cities because, you know, Philadelphia is favorable for our homes. And where do you, how do you get off charging for people that want to buy it? I mean, they in northern liberties, I mean, you know, how do they afford to fix effectively? Um, so you know, the, the two ways that people charge is at home or at work. And in those cases, you know, at work is not necessarily available unless they're. They're going to install those types of, for their, for their, for their employees. Um, cooperative charging stations is something I, you know, that's been in, in this conversation and it's something that I think is a workable. Possibility for those inner city areas or densely populated locations in our scam. And some of the areas in Philadelphia, so.
You know, it seems to me that the two questions that arise and I, I don't have an E V, although my kids do and. But I'm, I'm looking at your map, trying to figure out, I mean, two things. We have to make sure, or we can't make sure, we have to consider the i- issue. As you said, people don't have garages, people don't have driveways, that we make sure that people who have fewer resources. Aren't double, you know, whammyed by the fact that they wish to have an E V that. They're, they're in a different footprint house and different footprint community. So once again, if they don't have a big house with a driveway, they're, they're, they get hit double, you know? But also, when you look at the western part of county, my instinct is that many of the people in western part of the county. Um, drive more. You know, they're, they may benefit from having an E V because they drive more, but there are fewer options for them to charge. So it's like, you have, you have a density which might make it, you know, um, more likely that you'll find a solution than where people are driving. You know, every day they're driving fifty miles, seventy miles. And they would benefit from having an E V. I mean, do they ever consider like putting them in places that aren't used at night? Like um, school parking lots, you know, we have schools all over that have big parking lots.
Well, that should be the other, we can talk about two. I brought up two of those areas that I think this whole, this whole process to look at, which was. You know, uh, the two that I mentioned before, but the third is mapping out those locations in, in the county. That would be ideal for the different types of charging. Overnight charging, you know, daytime charging, trying so that there's a, so the county has a. That's preconceived understanding of where they can see the charging infrastructure go, so that when the funding comes in and, and the, and the infrastructure catches up. We have an idea of where the best location to be.
So, very nice segue. Um, and the schools is an excellent option. One of the things that we want to do with our, we have that original baseline data that we are able to receive from D V R P C. But we want to give the, the municipalities, the stakeholders a chance to do like a more interactive, deeper dive. Um, to be able to look at their communities and be like, well, where are the opportunity areas? Where could this? Uh, where could we put the E V infrastructure? Um, and this is one of the, schools is an excellent idea of. At night, is it a possibility to be able to use those parking lots? And then also during the day, be able to have workplace charging for teachers um, and or students. Um, so that would be, that's something that we should map.
I, I will just note, um, there's been discussions as the N E V rounds have been going forward and trying to find. The twenty four seven fast charger locations to build out the alternative fuel corridor network. Throughout the region. There have been concerns from local property owners, whether it's municipal schools or whatever, about. Having twenty four seven charging access with nobody present at all hours of the day. Like gas stations are closed at two A M. When there's nobody on site to, you know, take care of you in the, in the building. It's the same kind of thing. It's a liability thing. It's insurance and everything else, which is, I think, part of the reason why, even though. Lower Marion was in the zone during this last one A round of N E V charging stations. It was a challenge to find a location that was suitable enough that was operating twenty four seven. Um, for someone in Lower Marion to actually go. There were a couple of places we're looking at. It's like, well, they're open till one. The point of the fast charger was it has to be available. It's the emergency backbone of everything. Therefore, when the grants got rolled out for that Route thirty corridor, it was to the Wawa just over the border to Delaware County. And I think a couple of spots in Philadelphia. So not saying that it isn't a possibility down the line. It's one of the issues that's going to have to get worked through and everybody's going to have to be more comfortable with saying, I'm going to leave my car here and go. You know, quarter mile, half mile away to my house. And I'm going to know nothing's going to happen to it and the people that are on the site are going to be comfortable with, I know nothing's going to happen with this car.
While it's charging. And let's be clear about one thing. It is not economical. To have an electric vehicle and use publicly char, public charging stations, whether they be level two or level three. Public charging station. It is not economical. The car costs more money and the energy that you're paying for does not, is not less expensive. Per mile than paying for gas.
You have to get to that residential home rate for, to reap the benefits.
That's right. That, the key here is opening up. The, the economic viability is opening up what Nicole said is that residential rate. The public rates are not economical. They're great for like, you know, you're going on a road trip and. Charge and that's when it'd be, it's still economical at that point because you're using it all on the long haul. But for everyday usage, that residential rate is where the savings and the attraction is. For people to purchase and, and convert to E V, which then also. Which, which also then benefits the environment, but without that residential rate being readily available. And for, for the common user. And solving the inner city and solving the densely populated areas. E V, the E V does not make sense.
But that second level of charging, I forget what you call it.
Level two.
Level two charge. Can you have that put in your house?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so then, then it's the. So it's an upgrade. Yes, so because not only are you going to have, like in my family, there, my son has two electric cars. I mean, there are two people going, they need to. But the other issue that I've been told, because I have this contact with these people in California. Surprisingly, is that the kids in the high school, their parents are now buying them electric bikes rather than cars to get to school. So the issue is. Will they want to be charging? No, not at school.
If you're, if you're commuting on an electric bike.
That's not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, I have an electric bike.
The amount of mileage you get out of it. That's not an issue.
You know, traveling that far.
It's more safety because that's the issue.
Yeah.
It's a much smaller battery. Okay, okay.
All else fails, make the lazy kids pedal home.
Exactly. Uphill, stockless ways.
You can't pedal your car in a restaurant.
That, that, that'll be the new model, the Flintstone style, where the floor just goes away, then you can just use your feet and push it around.
And, and one other thing, level one chargers are not viable.
No.
The one ten, the one ten, but le- level one charger is not viable. What do you mean by that? It'll take three days for me to charge my car.
Yeah.
It'll take seven hours for me to charge my car with a level two charger. And I can charge my car from the D C fast charger in twenty, twenty five minutes.
Level two is an upgrade. You get.
Yeah, you know, this is a, it's a two twenty line, you know, forty, fifty amp dedicated line, you know, it's. Once again, it's that twenty five pounds factor, um. But it's, you know, it provides, you know, nine, the, the difference is it provides nine to ten kilowatts. Per hour as opposed to a level one, which is providing one maybe to two kilowatts per hour. So, you know, to charge my car in, in three days, I mean, unless I'm not using it often.
Well, what, what you're doing, John, is at least we're getting the questions. Some of these communities have, don't even know what the questions they should be considering.
Exactly.
That's where, where this is really important, even if we don't have the answers right away, begin getting that.
Yes, have the conversation.
Yeah.
Um. This is, I want to, you know, we're gonna, we're running short on time.
Yeah.
Um, these are some of the ideas that we have. We're talking about geographic location of where these chargers could go. Whether it's right now, we already talked about possibility of schools. Present, once again, for the conversation of having a municipality look of, here are our multifamily. What's nearby? Are there schools? Are there commercial properties? Are there offices? Just to be able to explore and have some of that educational conversation along with it. So a municipality could be like, oh, here's the issue with this. This is a possibility for here. To Seinfeld it, yada, yada, yada. You know, so they can start to look at their communities and have that conversation. So. Whether it's right now, whether it's this afternoon or whether it's next week, if you think of. Oh, I wish I knew where this was, thinking about E V infrastructure. Please let us know and we can incorporate it into our interactive mapping. So we've talked about this a lot. We've already hit a lot of these. These are some of these municipal issues that it is important to start to have the conversation around. Um, you know, the users, who is using it? Is it publicly accessible? Is it twenty four seven? Is it for the office workers? Is it for the government operation? Is it for government operation from seven to three and then publicly accessible? These are some of the questions that when the infrastructure goes in, you need to start to think about who is using it and when. We have run into issues of fire hazards. Yeah, and, and this is a huge municipal concern. So we need to start to address that to a certain degree. Um, some to dispel this and some to make sure that they are safe and that we are, you know, that it is uh, done in a responsible manner. H O As, this is an issue of H O A regulations of how these chargers go in. What do they look like? Are there issues with common spaces taking up parking spots? Like, can you run your extension cord across the lawn and then somebody trips on it? All sorts of things that are because of the regulations of H O As. On street charging, I had my son hang out the window and take a picture of this one. This might be my new favorite E V charging picture. Of somebody drove their car in near Saint Joe's Prep, parked on the sidewalk. So they could plug their car in. As you can see, there's on street parking right there. I think this is the solution to all of our charging problems. We will now allow everybody to park on the sidewalk. How do we deal with it? How do we regulate the ability for on-street charging? Um. I don't, don't look at me for an answer right now. I ain't got one, but we're working on it. Multi-family, we've talked about that a lot. The financial models, how do you? Once again, there's a extremely interesting point about the residential rate versus the commercial rate and making that. The equity issue that we see at the bottom. Um, yeah, the E V usage cost and turnovers. How do you ensure that people don't park, charge, go away and then never, they don't come back till Tuesday when they want their car? So there's got to be, you, you know, there has to be mechanisms in there that want, that make people move, charge and go. Um, you know, how do we incentivize the increasing the E V infrastructure? Um, and what do we do for properties that are being retrofitted? How can we regulate and incentivize? I'm putting an E V infrastructure on properties that are already existing, that aren't going through the development process. Um, and then obviously this all come, a lot of this comes down to equity, like it shouldn't just be, you know, rich people toys. We need to make it accessible so we can transition. Um, I know we are running very low, Tom. Going through that list, is there anything that has popped into your head of like, this is another issue? This is something that, you know, as we move forward, because we are in the very beginning process, of, then something that you think we should address. Or an aspect of one of these to make sure like, oh, when you're doing it, think about this or make sure you address this.
Okay, one, model ordinances. When, when working through the model ordinances. The type of E V stations that are required. In, as part of the model ordinances should be use specific. So what I mean by that is if your, if E V chargers are required at a convenience store. They should be D C fast chargers of a certain wattage or higher. If they are office complexes, they can be level two chargers between certain kilowatt, certain watt, kilowatt hour. Range to provide that because we figure people are there for a longer period of time. There should be a comprehensive, there should be a matrix of what type of charger should be required, should be required for different types of uses. Not just an ordinance that says for. X amount of square feet of office space are required to have. X or Y amount of D C, or uh, Y amount of E V chargers and just leave it up to them to make that decision. It should be clear as to if you're in an office complex, you can use level two chargers of this range. If you're a convenience store or if you're a. Whatever, something that has or a shopping center, you should have D C fast chargers because people are there for short periods of time, meaning it needs. Whereas places where there might be for a long period of time, they could use. So that nature should be thought about, should be discussed and should be part of a model ordinance.
Yeah, and those ordinances already exist in this region that are nonspecific. And, and you know, they are related to a lot of, you know, developments. And they're just throwing in level chargers just to throw them in and they're useless. I mean, they're essentially useless. So what we're seeing is the chargers that are going in, in the private community is at the Wawa, at, you know. Tesla, of course, but those are all being done by the charging companies and they have their value. But the ordinance, they might as well not even have that ordinance because, you know, what's being installed is essentially useless.
Putting a level two charger at a convenience store is useless. It is, it pays no, it. It makes no difference whatsoever because people are not going to use it. Yeah, it doesn't give enough power. The people are in a public use or, you know, so.
But see, do, do, do we hear you guys correctly that? That our model order shouldn't focus on the traditional approach of square footage, everything versus, but rather kind of just specify the type. And leave it, this is the big thing, and leave it up to the free market to determine how many of those are there.
No, you can do both, but it should be the first, the first decision that should be made, the first matrix of order. First point that should be made is if it's this type of use, you should be using, you should be required to put in this type of. Charge station. Then, once you've decided that, then based on the use, if you have this amount of square feet, then you should be required to put in two or three of them or whatever.
Okay.
You know, or if you have this many units, you should be required to put in this many. So it should first, the decision, the deciding factor first should be what's the use and what type of charger should we put in? Then you can have a, then you can have a, a standard as to come to determine how many of those you can put in. So I think it should be public, but you can't do, you can't do the amount until you figure out what type.
I definitely hear the point. I think it seems like municipalities have shied away from that for now. Because of the massive cost differential. Level twos and level threes, like we're talking.
It's not an unfunded mandate. There's a lot of funding out for this. It's just people, it's not happening.
So that we have to make that linkage, that if you're saying you have to do this, this, these are the.
There is funding for charging stations.
Right.
There is funding, private and public for charging stations.
Level three?
Sure. Level two, level three, there is funding for it.
Matt, let's vary.
And I'll, I'll add something, which is because I work with the municipality on updating their ordinance to. Require um, charging stations. They were very, very hesitant to the point where they didn't want to put it in. They didn't want a name, I like, oh, D C F C, level two, whatever, because they're like, whatever we put in the ordinance, in three years, it's going to be changed. Like, they're going to call them different things. They're going to have different kinds of chargers. So we're just going to put in like, electric vehicle charger, which I hear your point that that's not that helpful, but. They were afraid that like, as soon as they. They were afraid that like, as soon as they adopted it, it would be obsolete in terms of the terms that were being used. Kilowatt hour that we needed, et cetera. So this is a municipal concern that.
The cost to put in a DC, the cost to put in a level two charger, so it's gotta be somewhere between. You know, thirty five hundred and five grand. To put in a DC fast charger is probably closer to fifteen, twenty grand.
Uh, it is not what we've seen from the grants that were worth, like level, the DC fast charger, Navy grants that were worth, were hundreds of thousands.
It depends on, it depends on what's there.
I'm talking about once you, once you've weighted it over a long, over the full amount of, not. You can't just put in one, yes, putting in one is gonna cost you a hundred or some thousand dollars because you gotta do the infrastructure. You gotta bring in a transformer, you gotta bring in control panels and everything. And then once you have that, if you put, you know, then you. You disperse that cost over how many stations you put in.
And not only that, Kiko, that the last few Navy um public meetings we were talking about was still indeed. We would like to know every time a level three charger is being installed somewhere so that we can make sure there's enough vocal grid capacity. So if you're asking somebody that's applying for a convenience store, that they have to go through a level three. Now all of a sudden you're adding six months of time, maybe to wind through the PICO bureaucracy process. I don't know what that does in terms of, you know.
I, I get it, but you either, you have, I mean, and that, this is a conver, this is a longer conversation. But you either make the decision to require these things so that you support the, 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 the transfer from. From fossil fuels to electric vehicles, or you just leave it up and then there's a much slower transition. Because the infrastructure and the, and the um, the availability of charging is just not gonna be out there. At some point, there's a decision that has to be made. How much are we throwing ourselves into this process or into this decision? And, you know, if we're gonna throw ourselves into it, then we need to make those, those hard decisions and require those things to happen.
So.
Our experience, we applied for that, that federal grant through DDRDC for fast chargers. And we were, and we're doing the infrastructure. I mean, we have our, our own team that can provide the infrastructure for the fast chargers. And we were trying to get eight fast chargers and our grant applications for half a million dollars. Just to get eight chargers and we were doing the. And I think what we have found is that there is grant money available for the chargers, but not necessarily for the infrastructure to get there. So, so I think municipality is kind of left with trying to figure out how to actually get the power in the infrastructure. But the other thing I wanted to say, uh, in terms of a model ordinance, is there any conversation at all at this point about? Charging stations and handicap parking spaces?
Yep, and then that came up in our sketch.
Yes. Yeah, we have seen, um, when it's like design and safety standards. For off-street parking, that there are handicap accessible EV infra, like the off-street. Like the design of them is pretty easy, you know, and that's, it's, it's, people have been working on that. The on-street is the biggest issue. And then honestly, I think a lot of what we're talking about here. Is there a way for a model ordinance to incentivize? You know, maybe that transition from a level two to a level three? Like, how do we have that conversation? And I don't have the answer yet of if we. If it's so more, much more difficult to do the level three. Can we have some sort of incentive in a model ordinance where a municipality can then, you know, make that transition easier? As we move forward. Um, and as with all of our model ordinances, our hope is. To be able to have that educational commentary to go along with the language. So municipality can understand what it is that we're saying, why we're advocating it, and then what their options are. So we gotta, we gotta move on.
Yep.
Real quick, I just wanted to, uh, open and, uh, making comments online, getting some staff.
Rob, if you can bring up the chat, there's a shadow conversation going on among other board members.
Yeah, so let me, let me just, we'll get that one second. We, the county should have a conversation with the governor's office of critical investment. Who's, who's charged is to get the federal funding out into the state. For a lot of things, but EV charging, EV charging stations is another one you should. And, and Ryan Redley used to be the commerce director in the county, heads up that, heads up that office. Um, and I could facilitate that, but we should have a conversation, there can be, the county planning commission could be a great resource. Providing municipalities like John's information as to how they can obtain that funding. Or even private individuals, the private developers, how to find that, how to find that funding, what funding is, what funding is indeed available. Um, so that could be a good, a good resource for the county and the county planning commission to be able to pass on. Um, so that's something.
Thank you very much.
Ready to do that, we should be doing that sooner, we should do that, so.
Steven?
Yes.
Yeah, just, just real quick, uh, as you know, my son's in commercial real estate and there is a well-funded hedge fund that is. Is starting to build EV gas stations. In other words, it'll look like a gas station, but it'll be all EV chargers. Uh, and they're, they're coming down from North Jersey. It's not a liberty to say who it is, but they have taken that, that lead. And they're, I guess, you know, starting to pop them up on, along the turnpikes and northeast extension and things like that. Um, second, secondly, if, you know, we were talking about incentivizing um people to build them. Maybe the townships or maybe we could, and, and our ordinance suggested a tax abatement or something. That would accelerate the, you know, like a, a, a one-year tax abatement or a five-year tax abatement, I'm not sure. But the, for people to step off the curb and get started on these things. In, in a more um accelerated uh method. So. That's my two cents.
Yeah, thank you. And I have another commentary. Uh, in Europe, Steve. Uh, the charging stations usually follow the transit train stations. Therefore, it made me think, are we involving SEPT on this? Can we use the available main parking lots? To establish uh this charging station, stations? That would be an option.
Yes, that the parking lots would be great for level two charger because people are gonna be there.
I do know DVR PC is having conversations with SEPTA. About that and will be, will be informed of those conversations.
So one other interesting fact, so like the best place to put charging stations and, you know, for looking at statewide is at the. Is that the rest stops?
In discussions.
It's in discussion, but the problem is all the rest stops are privately leased.
Correct.
So they have, so the state has to go through and I've had, and. Because I've had this conversation with the governors. The problem is that they, they have to get change all the leases to allow for them, for the state to implement charging stations. Because even some of those rest stops that have Tesla chargers, those private leasing, the private leasing companies. Have had their own agreements with Tesla to put them on there. So there's this whole like. You know, web that has to be kind of pushed back in order to allow that same type of event that you have with a gas station. At a rest stop, same thing to happen with a, with a charging station.
Yeah, and the turnpike is a little different, but some of the, some similarities.
Yeah. So.
Well, trying to determine whether or not, if you have a charging station of private property. Whether or not you're allowed to charge a different rate. A week for electric usage and what the borough is charging you to get the electricity to drive. Can you make profit on borough going electricity? So we're having some legal challenges.
I think, I think, uh, one thing I'll leave with was that an ongoing conversation as this starts to materialize with. You know, the board would be great because I think there's definitely some interest, especially myself. Deeply involved and I know, um, the goal is also. Um, but I think, you know, continuing to have that conversation, but I do think that. Planning commission should be cautious about trying to bite off too large of a, of a project. And that's why I suggested that we should limit, limit some of the scope of what we're, what you're looking at to those kind of things. Like you're just talking about, you know, the ordinance, the location of, you know, a lot of charging stations possibly. And also ideal locations for charging throughout the county.
Yeah, there's definitely a scope, it, there could be scope creep, especially into things that. Our target audience, elected officials, municipal staff, you know, citizens cannot affect. So it is, I think it's critical for, like you said, for us to, to, to know our wheelhouse and then, uh.
A liability issue for something important.
Well, and, and just to make sure the board knows, I mean, that's generally where we landed. We call this the electric vehicles planning guide. Because the idea is that it will spread municipal partners and others. And so the ordinance is a big piece. And mapping is a big piece. And there will be discussion about some of these issues, but that's not going to be the overall focus. Going to acknowledge themselves. As, as we come back in the future, you'll start to see those take shape. And then you'll be able to see if we get too much on one. And before I leave, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that, uh, Robert and Anastasia are going to make it look awesome. And you can expect to see that awesomeness the next time we present, so. I wanted to give them the shout out as well. Thank you very much.
We want the active transportation planning smarter event. Kick off with Chloe and Claire.
How are you this morning?
Good, how are you doing? So, um, I'm Claire Warner, community planner. And here's Chloe and we're here to talk about active transportation. Talk about a planning smarter event that we are working on organizing for the fall. About active transportation. We're presenting to you today. A little bit about what inspired this topic and then also to get some feedback on what we have planned so far and to think about the event. So first of all, for active transportation, um, it can include a lot of different human-powered. Mobility options, but we're primarily talking about walking and biking. Um, Montgomery County has done a lot of active transportation-related projects. We've done plans such as bike Monaco and walk Monaco that are meant to improve the pedestrian bicycle connectivity in the county. We've also done model ordinances such as the model TOD ordinance and a number of other ones. And, um, we've also adopted policies that are meant to address act, um, transportation and health issues such as the complete streets policy. Um, Montgomery County has also been helping municipalities work on active transportation plans. As well as work on code updates um for active transportation-related um regulations. For example, Nervous, they did some bike parking standards um updates for their Seldo. We've also done a number of um planning smarter events that are related to active transportation-related projects. Um, a lot of them related to the projects that I just listed before. Um, these, the most recent one was in two thousand twenty-two in Pottstown. It was strategies to enhance walking and biking in your community. Um, that highlighted municipal implementation and um stra, um, and projects. And also a little bit about the education and cultural shift around, um, around active transportation. The, the training, um, transit-oriented development, um, planning smarter event that was in Landstale in twenty twenty-one. Focused on the model code, um, the model zoning ordinance. And that highlighted a lot of the land use and planning for station areas. Um, and then we did the um planning smarter events for both bike Monaco and walk. So all of these different events have highlighted different um specific projects, plans and policies that. Were implemented or adopted that would help to work towards a goal of creating more walkable and bikeable pal, um, places. And now I'm going to pass it to Chloe to talk about another strategy to promote active transportation.
Right, so we've done a lot of plans. We've even done a lot of planning smarter events about active transportation. So why are we here talking to you about another planning smarter event about active transportation? Well, that's because. We've been thinking about the whole system that is needed to get a, get good active transportation, get people out there walking and biking safely. Having the right infrastructure and also a supportive culture, having everything feel safe. And we have focused a lot on plans and on municipal implementation in our work. Obviously, we're a planning agency, we do plans, right? That's great. Municipal implementation, that's where a municipality often gets a grant, or sometimes we'll just build something to improve active transportation. Those are really, really important and we need to keep doing those things and keep focusing on those. There's something else in the work that we've been doing, um, and that we can see could make a big difference if municipalities all. Updated their code to include a bunch of provisions that relate to active transfer, to active transportation. And that could make active transportation better. So Claire and I created this booklet last year. The Pocket Guide to Active Transportation Friendly Code. It's still considered a draft, but we did print some and we kind of thought this through and worked with Julie in our graphics department. To create an actual document. And we presented it last year at the APA PA conference in October. And the, the reason we were inspired to make that is because in. Two forty-seven reviews, we were often making comments about that related to active transportation. There could be better walking paths throughout this development or better connections, wider sidewalk. Um, you know, you need to add bicycle parking would be a benefit to this development, a lot of comments like that. And those are things that could have been codified in the municipalities ordinances and often weren't. Um, and then we were also getting requests from some of the municipalities we work with through the community planning program for assistance in updating their zoning in Seldo. In ways that would support active transportation. So we've created this little guidebook. Done work for various communities, updating their code and. Uh, we often make comments to forty-seven letters about this. So that is why we are. That's what inspired the planning smarter event is that we've done this booklet on something that we haven't talked a whole lot about. So we're gonna tell you a little bit about the booklet, just like a brief overview and then talk about what we think we might do for the planning smarter event. Which is definitely still taking shape.
When is planning smarter event?
October. So, yeah, okay, Claire's gonna talk a little bit about what's in the booklet.
Okay, so the, the goal of the pocket guide is to help a municipality to audit their code, their, both their zoning and their subdivision and development ordinance. To identify improvements that can be made, you know, they could be small changes, they could be a lot more changes, um, that would support active transportation. Um, the pocket guide identifies a variety of these small changes that would then be a part of the land development process. And so, um, they fall into these general buckets. Each one has a number of different ones that are listed on every page. So we have a streetscape. This includes sidewalks, street trees, lighting and other elements that would make a sidewalk and pedestrian network generally more comfortable. Um, sidewalk, sorry, crosswalks, intersections, also street and block layout to a degree. And that includes the street design itself. Um, the crossing design and, and ways to make crossing and streets safer and that prioritize the movement of people who are walking and biking. Or other modes. Um, bike parking design, vehicle parking design. And building design, which is related to streetscape in terms of making a place welcoming and safe and capable to be in. Uh, land use, which is related to permitting a variety of uses. Um, in certain areas that would enable people to be able to walk, to run their errands, to, to, uh, go a short distance to. Go get groceries or something and not have to drive a car. And then transit. Um, so an active transportation can interact with transit. It's an ideal situation for creating a multimodal system. And, um, that would include creating safe pedestrian connections and, uh, people can bike. So these are generally the, the elements that are in, in the, um, in the booklet. And as part of our, um, we mentioned the PA APA conference last October. When we did our presentation, rather than going through in detail each, about each of the elements. We presented case studies from different municipalities that we felt, um, in Montgomery County, that we felt had good examples from their code. Of different provisions that, um, that would be required during land development. So one of the examples is from Lower Salford. Um, they have a really great trail network that has been developed over the years. And that's in part because they require trails to be developed with all of their developments. So, um, they have a, a great trail network. Um, this is a map that we helped to create. Um, that the township is now using to identify the gaps in the network. So because they, they have this, um, nearly complete network of. Nearly complete network of trails that have been put in place by developments over the years, they do have some segments that aren't connected. So the township is now being proactive about identifying those gaps and and pursuing uh the completion of the network through different grant projects and really targeting those. Specifically um to complete their pedestrian network.
And I'll just say briefly about Lower Marion. They've maybe done the most to update their code to be active transportation friendly. There are a lot of elements in Norman's code that. Support active transportation. Um you know, they've, this is the City Avenue District. Uh they've adapted this trail plan and actually an official map also and. As developments come in, they have details about what exactly is required in terms of trails and sidewalks. Um in all of those places. And so those are getting put in. They also incentivize offsite transit improvements. They require uh bicycle parking with new development in Lower Marion and they also require this. Small but often overlooked, an important element of requiring a driveway to continue with, sorry, growing a sidewalk to continue. With the same materials across a driveway in the same grade. So you don't come to a driveway while walking and suddenly find that you have to. You know, it's sloped and it's asphalt and so it says visual signal to drivers that. Uh this is still a pedestrian space and you have to be careful. So things like that that they've already put in their code are great examples of ways you can put something in your code and then you see it. In development. Uh okay, so that's a very brief overview of the booklet, which. So we we presented it as a draft at the APA PA conference and asked participants in our session at the end to look through it and provide feedback. And then we've also asked our colleagues here at MCPC. To look through and provide feedback. So we're planning to make some significant updates to the booklet and then we'll have that as a physical. Um giveaway at the planning smartie event in the fall. Uh okay, so we do have a date and a location, Tuesday, October twenty-ninth at the Upper Gwinnett Township Building. Our MCPC presentations are going to focus on code for the reasons we've just stated, but we wanted to um include some other things in the event. So we've actually invited both of the TMAs that cover Montgomery County. To attend and share about some of the work that they have done. So partnership TMA is working with Lansdale and Upper Gwinnett to. Install bike lane. They do a lot of other things too. And I think um having organizations like the TMA is that support. Active transportation among other things uh is great for the county and that. Having them share some of the work that they do will be also beneficial to our municipal partners to attend these events. We're considering one other possible guest, trying to figure out time and how that's going to work. We do not have a title for this event. Um so open to your ideas on that and generally to feedback on the how we frame this whole thing and. I guess I'm going to go back for a second to. This, no. This thing, so. Sort of trying to frame it for the public as, you know, active transportation has a lot of pieces to make it really work. We have the TMA's are the our organi- some of our organizations. Having a supportive culture where elected and and appointed municipal officials and. The public understand active transportation and safety is something I know has come up here before. It's a big, you know, good infrastructure helps with safety, but it is also a an education piece to that, which is here. So. Kind of like framing the whole thing and then how does the code fit in and where do the TMA's fit in and um why are we doing this whole event? Now we have to figure out how to convey that. So does that, does the framing make sense to you? Do you have any ideas about the title and any other feedback? That's it, right? Yeah.
I think it's important for these types of conferences to show events. To to make sure people understand. Do you want to, you want to get people for different, I don't know if you're on it, but. Like active transportation in like newer communities looks very different than active transport. Like Lower Marion and Salford are good examples, like. Lower Marion is fully built out, not building new houses. Salford, I'm not super familiar with, but you can tell by the way it's built, like it's newer. It's trying to connect like these sort of disparate housing developments with these. Like, I think that's both third degree and I think people need to understand that like context is really important, but you can still. Do things in different contexts. Doesn't need to look, it doesn't need to look like a traditional town. It doesn't need, you don't need to have like a a a commercial nature. You can do things in different ways that'll. That'll pro- promote um. And and if you if you build it, people will use it. So I think you want to, you want to make sure that however you set it up, you have different types of. Presentations or demonstrations to show that you can, you can, you can adopt different types of model ordinances. And they'll have different effects. It won't change necessarily the way, because people live, move to those areas for specific reasons. So you don't have to completely like blow up the way you live, just.
That's a really good point. Probably something that we should think about in terms of the visuals and and how we discuss it. Right. And I think. I think in the promotion too. So planning, our planning smarter series is advertised to like everybody on our mailing list, which is. Municipal elected officials and planning commission members and municipal staff and some other interested folks and it will be open to the public. So if you want to attend, they can. But in terms of attracting folks from areas that don't have transit, let's say, like we do have things. I think there are things in that booklet and we say this in the introduction. Not all of these ideas are going to be relevant in every community, but there are some in here for different kinds of places. So. Making sure we put that in the kind of promotional material that in in the like the visuals and examples that we use throughout the presentation that. There's things that are more relevant in a really built up dense community versus a rural, more rural community and that. You pick and choose, like what's the right thing for your community? What do you think you need in your code or what could be better in your code that isn't there now? Thank you.
Have you started, have you started an advertising? I know it's been out there a little.
No, we only pinned down the date and location yesterday. So we haven't advertised anything yet. So we need, we do need a title. And a paragraph description. So we will do that. Soon. But if you have any ideas.
I always come up with ideas.
Great.
Um is the booklet available yet?
Um I can give you, I I have some paper copies of the version that we distributed in October sitting in my office and I'm happy to give you one. We do plan to revise it for. Distribution this fall, but if you want to look at what we have right now, you can.
I would mind, I mean, since we're right in the beginning of doing ours.
Yeah.
And still I would mind at least you know, we're kind of getting some idea about what's what we should be doing in advance.
Right. And it is something that's, I know that it won't get left out of your plan, but uh. Plans sometimes gloss over or just don't even mention that you can actually put elements in your code. So. Often an active transportation plan will be about the network, which is really key, very important. You want to have the network and figure out where you want to put bicycle infrastructure, where you. Uh improve pedestrian infrastructure. But sometimes we don't even see mentioned in a plan that like, okay, look at your code also so that when you see development come in. You get the kind of elements you need on those sites, et cetera. So um. Yeah, I I'll hand you that for you.
What you can submit to your book. Whatever.
I think it'd be interesting to specialise to where some of these elements get placed in other areas, so either whether they're in the south or because. You know, much like you go, talked about this before, the sidewalk issue, you know, it's most of those sidewalk requirements are sitting in the Saldau. And for a long time, a lot of municipalities would just waive their requirements for putting in sidewalks. I mean, I think that's changed a little bit over the over ti- over time, um given the emphasis on. You know, pedestrian connections and in potential future pedestrian connections and just requiring those things. I know that's something I know. In Abington, we tried to continue to require those things, so even though they may not connect. So the interesting thing would be where some of these, these, these requirements are. Are are placed, whether in Saldau or in Zoni, because it's much ea- much harder to avoid them in zoning ordinance. As opposed to trying to get them through as a waiver in the Saldau. So I think the discussion on that is probably. A big part of, you know, just how, how much teeth we put into some of these requirements for some of these facilities.
Does the county identify like the missing links in the relationship or is that a municipal function?
There is, there are various things that identify various kinds of missing links. So I mean Bike Monaco has a bicycle network that. You know, in an ideal world gets built out, so you can see where those are planned. DVR PC has done some really great work analyzing gaps. For both bicycling and also the pedestrian network where you have a whole network of connected sidewalks and crosswalks and then you run into a barrier. Whereas if there was a high quality crosswalk across here, you could connect to a whole other network. So that data is available. And the same for bicycling, low stress bicycle network. Um and then where you can, would be you can prove the connection across or along some major road, you could then access another whole area that would be. Safer for bicycling.
That's looking down to the municipalities.
That's a good question. I think there are some municipalities that probably don't even really know those tools exist. And yeah, I.
Well, I think it depends on the municipality to a degree. So for Lower Salford, I showed that map on the screen that that we worked on. That was based a lot on the methodology that DVR PC did for their sidewalk gap analysis. Um but in Lower Salford's case, they didn't have a really robust sidewalk network. They had a really great trail network. So the DVR PC data doesn't show the date, um the trails, it just does. Sidewalk network. So we use the same methodology to develop that, but with trails and sidewalks. So there is, it depends and like to the point about.
A dotted line on the Salford.
Yes.
Which was opposed to our desire.
They they amended to show their planned routes that they want, they would like to put on these.
I think Lower Salford is a really interesting example because it started before we really were pushing that.
Yeah.
And one of the distinctions that they made with dealing with the reality in that. Growing community, I think it might have been in the seventies or eighties, but they did these, you're calling trails, I like to call them community pathways. The fact that they quit when when it wasn't as. Easy to get people to understand because everybody thought a sidewalk meant you were Philadelphia. So these community pathways went into the subdivisions in a way that said, oh, this is our friends walking. This is where our kids will ride their bike. And they said, yeah, we can do that. And where they're appropriate, that's a great way to do it. And I'm talking to everything that these multimodal. But in these communities, it was something that could be embraced. So it's not only being flexible. On your design, but it's also how you speak about that in communities that may have some issues. So I think both of those are important.
I like the community pathways name a lot. It's very nice. And I could see that being a useful messaging tool rather than as well.
I think that gets at this too, that like the culture and education around active transportation has to be locally relevant and. And it has to be present, like there have to be conversations about the fact that like kids sometimes want to get some place. Right? Like that's something everyone can kind of wrap their brains around a little bit, like when you say, you know, oh, people drive here. Like, well, you know, what if your fifteen-year-old wants to go to their friend's house? Like, they're not going to drive. Oh, well, you know, like this. Maybe they would want a safe walking path or biking pathway, right? So you have to. Approach that in a way that is.
It's interesting. Another, another case study like was interesting, I don't know, still is effective, was Lower Gwinnett. Because Lower Gwinnett had paths made for their horses back in the nineties, do you remember this? And they made these connections. The next thing they looked, there were all these mothers walking their kids to school. Where they were building connections around the horse people. And suddenly, I mean, there was some conflict of views, but they were people using, I mean, people wanted to be able to safely move from one place to the other.
Is that in your comments with Lower Gwinnett?
It is, yes. It's, they're still active, yeah.
But uh are there any other word comments? Anybody? Obed or Bob?
Yeah, I mean, fantastic. Uh thank you so much for the, for sharing this. As you know, for me, this is a important, someone who uses a bike uh constantly all the time. And I consider that the work of the organizations or the local nonprofits is very important because we work directly with the communities. However, what I don't see is grants, are grants. That can really encourage the organizations to work closer with the municipalities or to work closer with the with the county. Because many times we don't have the personnel or we don't have the budget really to establish a stronger program. At this moment, for example, and I will just give this example, Secate, we are partnering with the Valley Forge. A national park in a grant to. Eh implement the use of the bikes on weekends eh to educate eh eh people how to transit with bikes. And uh and they use it as families. But this is just an example. However, there are very few grants. That can encourage nonprofits to really reach out the municipality, uh uh reach out the families and to. And to invest time on this. Therefore, I really encourage if we can think in ideas. In partnering stronger with nonprofits and opening resources for for the nonprofits, that will be great. Because I think then we can accelerate the use of of this, of of this mobility uh uh to increase the use of the bike, et cetera. Thank you.
Thanks, Obed.
Thank you so much.
Bob, anything?
I'm I'm good, Stephen. Thank you.
The other four members, Sarah?
You should call it, you can't get there from here.
Without caution.
Yeah. Can I get there from here?
More along the Dr. Seuss. Have you seen my pathways? Uh thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you think of something later, you know, if we're to get in touch with us, we're going to be working on this from now until October.
It's just good.
I have something.
That's all I got.
Problem.
Okay, great.
My work here is gone.
I'll take all the RE and reference titles he can get. Certainly into the world.
Forget it. Oh, it was.
So we're going to move on to the Erie Street prison. Um and. Call on Scott, Patty and Aaron.
Come on up.
I'm gonna take the mantle for this one. Um and uh.
Wait, before you get started, is Anne on line?
Twice. Well, she's online.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm going to make sure she's online.
Stephen's getting nervous.
It's two, two in a row. She's not building it, definitely. That will end in June.
Online with us.
For sure. Uh can you go back a slide? And I know, yeah, I think we have several people online uh interested. Uh certainly, it's been a very topical and has drawn uh the public, public response at the board of commissioners level. In fact, this presentation and those viewing uh online um is not much different from what was, what was presented uh in April to our our board of commissioners. But we wanted to share that with our board members as well as uh any updates uh since then. And uh we basically give this conversation, which will be happening over the next year, um a a foundation uh as far as our board is concerned. Uh the Mount Erie prison and we did have a.
It's not Mount Erie, Erie Street.
I used to live in Mount Erie, Erie Street prison. It is, uh as you know, across from the courthouse on uh Erie Street and the cow, uh the picture of it right there, uh beautiful structure. Uh the architect was Napoleon Lebrun, who is a a well-known in circles. Uh he designed this around or it was built around eighteen fifty-one. A number of other projects, including the courthouse itself, he also designed. And uh some uh well-known churches, in fact, Saint Peter and Paul in Philadelphia and a number of churches in New York. I don't have the name in front of me.
Who was your architect? I'm sorry.
Uh Napoleon Lebrun.
Lebrun.
And uh. Yeah, one other, uh Academy of Music, yeah, did as well. So uh it it was discontinued its use as a prison in nineteen eighty-four or five, nineteen eighty-six. And uh has basically sat vacant since then. And uh I think it would be fair to say uh there has been a fair level of neglect. Um the county has owned it. So uh throughout numerous administrations. Uh has risen up in terms of topic over what we do with this. And I I remember some of those coming through. Uh but no real viable ideas or commitment to make them happen uh had, has been available in that time span.
What type of prison was it? What what?
It was county prison. Uh it was the main county prison. Um there's uh some interesting history that some people have researched. Uh and I I learned a lot of, you know, back in the. Uh, and I, I learned, uh, a lot of, you know, back in the, um, eighteen hundreds, uh, you know, debtors, uh, immigrants coming over. Were often finding themselves there, uh, in financial trouble. Uh, but, you know, it was, nineteen eighty-six wasn't that long ago in terms of, we think of old, old time things. Uh, and it's amazing that it was actually. Yeah, it was a short, uh, yeah, you didn't need the buses, that's for sure. Um, and also you'll see it in another picture, uh, soon. But right next, adjacent to it, uh, you see kind of alley that runs alongside with the Do Not Enter sign is a surface county-owned parking lot. So we own the essential, including this, the whole corner tract, about two and a half acres. Um, just a, a, a little more background. So last year, I'll, 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 I'll fill you guys any, probably some of you may have followed in the media. Um, our leadership at the time, uh, had decided to demolish it. And to, uh, move forward with the plan, uh, you know, to use the land redevelopment, uh, different ideas. Um, that was a full master planner revision was never created, uh, or shared on that. But there were strong feelings at the top of our, uh, leadership that it needed to, uh, that it no longer served any purpose. Uh, and it could go. As planners, we were not, um, of that opinion, um, and, and we advocate for, uh, adaptive reuse, historic preservation in all our communities, especially our downtowns. We know, know how important that is and can really, uh, hold on to the character of a place. And we've seen it happen in, in num- a number of places. So it was disappointing from a staff standpoint to see that conversation taking place and not having out the ability to really, uh, impact it. Although, uh, voices were, 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 were made, um, certainly, uh, for myself. Um, but we were not really part of the process. That changed, however, um, the public really came out and, uh, were adamant about, uh, not wanting to see this happen or the demolition. Uh, and as that was going through the process with Norristown, it was, it was a source of conflict, uh, with last year's, uh, Board of Commissioners. And, uh, in the public. Uh, so in the end, uh, around October, November, um, that leadership, which was, uh, on its way out. Uh, backed down and said, uh, put a pause, a six-month suspension on the demolition permit, which was at that time ready to go before Borough Council. It had already been through the Harb. The Norristown Harb had recommended against approving the demolition permit. Uh, but it was up to the Borough Council whether it would go through it and I'll, we'll come back to that in a moment. Uh, so that's what it was. And then, and then the planning commission was invited at that time, uh, to be, have a significant role in this process. Something we were great grateful and not a little bit nervous about, given all of the attention and importance. Uh, that, that, uh, people rightfully have put on this project. But, uh, as I can say now, and Patty Gutplan, Aaron Feely, uh, are integral members of our team, uh, working on this. Uh, that we're very, uh, thankful, grateful that we are now, uh, in such a role with this project. And will, uh, hopefully lead it forward and find a successful, uh, alternative to what was going to happen. Uh, so let me bring you up to speed on the demolition permit. Uh, the announcement we made at the Board of Commissioners last month, uh, was that the county was good, not going to renew or seek to renew. Asked to renew the suspended demolition permit and would re- and instead, uh, withdraw that permit. That has happened. Um, it, all it took was a letter, uh, and sent to, uh, Norristown Council. So they are aware that we no longer are seeking that. Uh, does not mean that we're out of the woods as far as demolition goes and what ultimately happens, uh, and we'll touch on that as well. But for now, uh, that is a, a, a good thing. The public wanted it. Uh, we thought it made sense as well. Um, if we have to return to that route, then we'll, we'll basically start over, um, and from a different position. Um, so let's go to the next slide. Um, the first thing we want to establish, uh, coming into this process was, uh, to, to ask the county to really have, um.
Share the.
I asked, thank you, uh, ask the county to, to set forth its goals and to be transparent and public about what those goals were. So we worked with the administration and came up with these eight goals, uh, that we have now shared with the public and shared with Norristown. And I'm going to just, uh, go through them. But before I do, you can see the graphic here on the right. Uh, this is the prison site, the, the narrow corridor here is the actual prison, uh, with a bit of a, a lot, uh, parking surface space behind it. And then the county parking lot is right here. Uh, one of the keys to finding a successful resolution of this is, is integrating the two parcels together into one tract. It will allow us to consider a, a much wider and more, uh, flexible way of, uh, approaching redevelopment. So first off, we want to recognize county and Norristown development goals related to development of the track. Not just what the county needs or wants or what we're going to do with it, but we, uh, do want to include Norristown in that conversation and have done so so far. Uh, second, inspire investment and increase revenue for Norristown. This is a great location. It's right across from the courthouse. It's in the center of town. And, uh, and the zoning, uh, does permit quite a bit of activity, uh, by right. So, uh, we feel that while we still have needs that we want to meet on the lot, we'll talk about in a moment. Uh, that this also will, um, be a dr- economic driver for, for the municipality of Norristown, which certainly, uh, could use it. And the whole renovation and redevelopment of the County Justice Center with, uh, Main Street and other development around it. Uh, certain, as a goal for both county and municipality. Number three, enhance public space and vibrancy of area in conjunction with the new justice center campus, as I mentioned. Um, and you can't see here, but the, the county courthouse is right, uh, here and all the construction activities you've seen. Most of that is on the opposite side. Um, so this is an opportunity as redevelopment goes to integrate it with the campus, with that corner, uh, with this primary location. And we think we, uh, could have a lot of opportunity in that respect. Number four, maximize the opportunity for development to preserve the most historically or architecturally relevant areas of the prison. So we love the prison. We want to see, uh, it remain as well. To what degree it remains is at issue. Um, this is not a case of the county, you know, having thirty million dollars to take, take this building and do what, you know, turn it into a museum or do whatever it wants with it. There is just that funding is not there. And we see a public-private partnership as being, uh, more, uh, impactful and, uh, uh, the resolution that we're looking for. So that could involve at, at minimum, the front facade of the prison, which everyone has recognized as one of the key aspects of Norristown's character. And what would be the first thing that, that most people agree, we don't want to lose. Uh, whether you go beyond that is possible and we're going to be talking about an RFEI. Uh, with developers and seeking their ideas. What do they want to do with it? Can they integrate other parts of that prison? Should they? Or do they, is that the right place to break it and start with new construction? Uh, that gives more opportunity for more substantial redevelopment plan. Number five, utilize the entire tract. Uh, this is what I mentioned with integrating the surface lot into the prison. Uh, when it was talked about last year and the demolition of the prison, the surface lot was really not part of the conversation. And we quickly realized when we got into it and, and, uh, started working with the county officials. Um, that, that was a big reason why there weren't any good ideas. You, there was so limited to what you could do while still trying to keep that building. Uh, and put something on top of it or behind it, just isn't a lot of room. Opening up the parking really changes that equation. Number six, gain community support and meaningful participation with partners and community members through a transparent process. So that's why we're, are presenting in Board of Commissioner meetings and, and Planning Commission. Uh, and that will continue. Uh, one of the comments we heard, um, uh, was just raised, uh, this week from one of our, uh, members of the public. Uh, who's been advocating for the prison, uh, about putting it on our website. Uh, I just want to say that we are exploring that. We actually started to explore that already. And we have a new tool called, uh, Monaco Engage. It's a, a site that we have purchased, uh, actually in purpose of the comprehensive plan. Uh, but it allows us to put multiple projects on there county-wise. We're trying to find other uses for it. The county, this would be a perfect one. So we look to establish that. Hopefully, uh, by early June, we'll have that up. And also then be able to integrate a community survey, um, collect more feedback from the public, uh, on this project as well. Uh, so we are actively working on that and that idea was a good one that was suggested. Uh, number seven, encourage sustainability, design and process and community connection to construction. This is something, uh, that I think should be a goal in all of our county development projects and properties. Uh, so we certainly want to include it with this one. Then number eight is a little different than the other seven, which are all geared towards redevelopment and, and keeping, uh, at least part of the prison. Uh, but we have to be upfront and again, transparent that there, this is not a, you know, unlimited funding, uh, bucket to do something with the entire, uh, shell of the building. The whole purpose is to create an RFEI where developers who are, uh, prof- experienced in doing these types of projects and have great ideas. They come in and say, this is what, this is what we have. We're going to tell you everything that you can work with and how you can do it. And then they come in with the ideas and, and tell us what, what would work, uh, for them, uh, and for us. And hopefully out of that, we'll have a great, um, project and, and resolution to it. Uh, but that number eight goal acknowledges, uh, that we do, are limited counties' public funding, uh, towards that preservation. And, uh, looking to the private sector, uh, to partner on a deal that works for both sides. All right, um, not going to go through every element of this. I, this was a point I wanted to make to the public and to the Board of Commissioners about the diligence that we've taken under since joining up, uh, or having this role in the project. Uh, includes a lot of documents, uh, and research and talking to, uh, other groups. Uh, we've met with some developers, not speaking specifically about this site, but just in general with projects that, that they had done. And how that might translate and, and start to get an idea of what we need to be focused on and bring to the table. Um, that's going to make it more, um, accessible and, uh, doable from, from a developer's standpoint. Uh, as well as historic preservationists, we've talked to a number of them, both at the state and regional level. Um, getting great insight and input because they're obviously working with projects like this all the time. And they see them go, they see, they see the ones that fail, they see the ones that succeed. Uh, so we have them kind of on our shortlist of, of, uh, phone call and meetings, uh, and help us. They're going to, you know, review some of the documents that we prepared, the RFEI. And, uh, and contribute, uh, their insight and input to make them as strong as possible. Uh, and then finally, Norristown, uh, you know, uh, they're an important partner in this, as I mentioned upfront. And one of the key things is the town center district zoning, which actually gives a lot of flexibility, as I said. Now, you can build up to ten stories on this site. Uh, a lot of uses, it's in their town center districts, so a lot of commercial and excuse, uh, type applications are available. Uh, so we, uh, look forward to, uh, working with them, uh, as well, uh, and what comes out. And if any changes need to be made, then that can be, uh, discussed through the process. So, uh, I mentioned the demolition, where we are now, the demolition permit is, uh, is done, uh, withdrawn. The structural assessment report. So this came out of, uh, meetings with both the historic preservationists and the developers. There was a report that the county had, they did back in about twenty twenty, where, uh, a, a firm came in and looked at the site. It was pretty much a visual assessment and it led to the conclusion that demolition was probably the best. Option for the county at that time. But it did get it, it wasn't the level, level of detail and, uh, you know, geotech and, and getting into the foundation and, and doing all the things that. Uh, a developer would need to know if they were trying to use part of the building or build off of it. The, uh, yeah, I, I believe so. The, the structural assessment study, once it's done.
Um. Previously.
The visual.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it, it could be and it could be requested if it's not already, um, that would be something we're going to look at. We're going to have some documents on that, uh, Engage Monaco site as well. Um, so that one, I think could.
It could be. The, the, the issue is that it was really, it was done, um, kind of on an emergency. There had been a recent roof collapse. And, um, one of our, um, firms on, on the phone call list was brought in to just do a quick assessment. Was there something imminent that this was going to fall down immediately and what did the county need to know for safety reasons? Um, and it was, and it was with the idea that eventually they, they were, it was going to probably be a modeler. So it, it's, um, it can be shared. I'm not sure it's all that help. Like again, it's there. It's just that it was, it. It, it was not, it had a certain purpose.
When was that done?
Twenty twenty. Yeah.
You might want to check with a solicitor.
Yeah, and I think that's what I want to first before we share.
Available to the public and if so, it needs to go through right to no request person. If it's not finalized, public document, I mean, by the commissioners, it may not be available to the public until it's finally approved.
And that's a good, that's a good point, John. Thank you. And I, I think that's the thing, the, the, the problem with it is if someone were just to read that. They are going to then be, think that that's our star plan or that's what, and that's what's guiding our decisions, which it is not. So, um.
Yeah, and I think, I think that had been shared informally with certain people at talk, because it's been referenced by some of the people, public to us folks. So I think someone has seen it. Um, I guess Patty pretty said where, what we know, but right now.
Is there an RFP for more evolved?
Yeah, so it, it's not an RFP, uh, we're using our enabled vendor list. So that's in process right now. Uh, we had six, seven vendors.
Seven vendors it went to and, um, there, there were two on Friday.
That was the RFEI?
No.
No.
No, that's something, yes.
The new structural.
This is a request for quotes on the structural assessment. So it, it's a little bit less public of a process than an RFP or RFEI. Um, once we get that locked down or a firm chosen for that in a contract, it's, they'll begin that work and it'll be hopefully about four months of, of work to develop. And then once we have that, that study will go into the RFEI in the fall and be a tool for the developers to.
Right now. Is that county parking? You said that, is that for county employees? Who's in that parking?
But, uh, jurors. Yeah.
Jury parking.
Yeah.
And. With the new justice center, what is, is there an increase in the internal parking that may allow that parking to go away comfortably for the county?
No, so that, that actually leads to my, uh, the middle part of this slide. Um. We were told by the administration, there were certain needs and uses that the county wanted to maintain on that tract. And those include forty thousand square feet of office space. Uh, which we know why, but I, I, I bet, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm publicly, uh, allowed to say that yet.
Something going to be there that county watch.
Yes, county operations. Uh, the existing parking capacity, they do want to keep that maintained. It would be in a structured parking format. There would also likely be structured parking for the new use that came in addition. Uh, and just as an example, if there are residential apartments built at the upper, upper levels. Uh, obviously there might be some parking associated with that, although Norristown technically doesn't require it. Um, but the market might.
And the firehouse.
So. Let, let me, let me talk, the firehouse, that was also the, in, in talks with Norristown, again, before we came online, it was a discussion. Um, that's something that they are, is a key goal of theirs. They have had five fire, firehouses. Uh, there are currently three still open. Their plan all along has been to consolidate that into one, uh, large station. Uh, so it was discussed at this site and that I think post demolition, that was one of the ideas to utilize a bit of land on this site. Uh, with the preservation element, that becomes a lot more difficult. Frankly, was my worry that, that, that could derail this project, um, or the success of this, this, this project if, if we held strictly to that. We have been talking to Norristown. We had a great meeting with their fire chief, who's now actually the interim manager. Um, there's another county site, county-owned site, um, uh, that could be, uh, a great alternative. And it actually, we think if Norristown, uh, it would work for them as well as far as this location goes. So I don't want to get into those details, but that's a, that would take it out of the table for this tract, which I think is a key. Uh, thing that needs to happen to make this more successful. Um, and again, this played, this would, that would be a great benefit to Norristown if, if the county again, uh, was a partner and allowing them to, to get those plans. Uh, for consolidating their firehouses. Um, I'd mentioned the zoning already, so keep going through here. Yeah, so this is the, the basic, uh, timeline that we're looking at now. Uh, very generalized, uh, we are working on the RFEI. That will happen over the summer. Uh, again, we have a, a few partners that we want to, uh, run that through, uh, get, give feedback on. While we're doing that, the structural assessment report will hopefully be underway. Um, the new deadline is, uh, this Friday. And we hope to at least have one or two, uh, submissions, uh, from what we've heard. And, uh, maybe even award that as soon as the May twenty-third Board of Commissioners. So that was a question we've heard from the public as well, asking about the status of that. Um, that's a, a little bit less public because it's not the RFP process or RFEI process. Uh, but just to let everyone know that it is, uh, uh, continuing and, uh, while we'd love to have been started on it already. Um, we've been working with the potential, uh, firms to, uh, provide a framework, provide the, the request that. That makes sense to them.
And just so we, and we're clear about that, the firms that are on that list have gone, went through the process to get pre-approved. It was not, oh, these are a handful that we want to send it to. That was a very, actually it takes about, uh, we were part of it. So part of our team here did some of the reviews of those many, many firms for many, many different specialties to help make recommendations. That then became that enabling list. So again, they're pre, they've been pre-approved, they have, um, history with us. And that's, that's what that enables us for, so that we can do a more efficient, some, um, requests for some of these things that is, that, um, fall into that, that realm.
They already have contracts, so as soon as they're awarded, they can get started.
Right.
So if we can keep to this schedule, that puts us, uh, like you said, in, in the fall for the RFEI. Um, you know, if that were put on the street and say. You know, if that were put on the street in, say, October, give about two months for responses, you know, we're looking at the end of the year having. That information out, beyond that, it's not, it's not the same as an RFP where a contract immediately comes out of it, you choose the firm and go ahead. It still would require the county to decide, you know, a, what they wanted to do with it and then who they wanted to work with. So I think that would come out from the submissions we received in the R F E I, and we're already receiving a lot of interest. Both locally and far away, I know at least a a couple have been told to me that that they're looking at this in places. Nowhere near here, and that's good, we want, we wanna generate that interest, we want, the more interest there are, the better ideas we might end up with and. Feasible ones too. So, so when it ultimately happens, you know, obviously, we're then we're in twenty twenty five. And that process is a little less defined as to how we get from the end of the R R F E I to the actual project. But that will be a next step with within this. I did, that's, that's, I think, I think wanted to leave it at that. Before we take any questions, there was a public comment, do we wanna read that in or? I'll, I'll end right there and just close with the fact that, again, this is. From from where, you know, we were at the planning conference in October, talking to our colleagues, whichever city it was. But, you know, everyone, everyone brought it up, I heard it, heard it a lot, and I, it's, I felt. Very frustrated, obviously, you know, that, that, you know, our, our, we were headed down a certain path and it really didn't make sense to a lot of people. And we didn't really have a good answer as to how we could, we could change that, but. Lo and behold, the opportunity came and, and I think it was through both quiet work, they knew we were interested, they knew we had ideas. And so it, it's so far as working out. Well, last point I do wanna make, and again, this is my cautious side, we, we've seen a lot of new media reports and headlines and. Even our commissioners are saying the right things and, you know, supporting this effort immensely. There is still the reality that we're not out of the woods, that if no ideas come forward, again, there's not a bucket of money that's gonna just, you know. Create a, a nice little museum out of a prison, that that's not the committed intent of this. Is to find a redevelopment project that preserves the character of of this, this amazing building. Within the context of Norristown for many years to come.
Comments from the board members or questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Scott, for this. I just want to comment. Last week, we received Hittin Secate. A world-known journalist who came to visit us. And driving from the Norristown Transportation Center, we passed it through, through the, front to the. The jail, and his first reaction was, wow, that is amazing, what is that, no? Then I told him that it was a jail. And then he told me, Obed, do you remember Le Cumbre in Mexico? I said, of course, because it was a palace. It was, it was a palace that then became a jail, and today is a place for the National Archives of Mexico. It's one of the most big libraries in the country. And then he says, what do you think that will happen there? And then together we say, it will be a great thing to have an art museum. I understand, Scott, that perhaps the county has not the thirty million dollars or more. To convert this into an art museum. However, it made me think that this is a great opportunity. That there are not many times in life we have opportunities like this. That this is a great opportunity. To bring together federal, state, county, municipal, nonprofits, and private foundations. And to make something that will be for the public good, like an art museum. It made me think that Montgomery County in, in, in. In Pennsylvania is one of the most important counties of the state. But we don't have an art museum. We are great in, in retail, we are great in square footage for malls, which is great. But what it says about us, that we don't have an art museum, and why I say that art museum is so important. Art museum really is transformative for every population, art and education can help us to challenge. The things that are ahead of us, like the climate change, like the diversity. Like the situations that we are facing with, with housing. All those things in an art museum can be addressed. And can be a place for social change, and at the same time, become, becomes a place for revitalization of the town, of the people, et cetera. And, and I am just thinking that not to rush into the answers that we need to find. But to see it in the, in the long vision, and I know, I, I can tell, I can, I can. Tell what you have been feeling, Scott, and I really appreciate tremendously that you're presenting and addressing this today. Because I think this has been a, not an easy issue, and it has been maybe frustrating. But many times the easy path is only bringing developers, build houses. And something that is public to become private. I think here we have a tremendous opportunity that will not come back again in many decades. And if we think carefully and we bring vision together and we put the people together, I think something great can be done. I was talking to my students at Penn who are in the, in the design. And city urban development, PhDs and master's degrees. I was talking to them and, yeah, we started to have conversations around this. Just because also we are talking about the situation in Chinatown. But this is one of the, of the, of the, of the opportunities that we have, that's what I wanted to say, I also brought my commentaries in, in the chat. Thank you, and I appreciate also, Scott, that you are addressing this, this morning, that is not an easy to address, thank you.
Thank you, Obed.
Any other comments from board members before we go on to puzzles?
Stephen, I've got. I ha- I have to mimic Opitz's comments, you know, you can't replicate what this building looks like. With lickum stickum stone and stucco and things like that. Over at the Saint Mary's, I think that's Upper Dublin Township, Scott, is that Upper Dublin?
Yes.
You know, they saved a couple of the houses there, they saved the walls and things like that, but this is a structure. Now, you know, can someone that, that is very well-versed or thinks out of the box from an architectural standpoint? Can they come up with something, you know, to, to save, you know, the majority of the building and still have the, the revenue? Which would be for the, you know, for either apartments or retail or whatever. You know, is the best ROI for a developer, but I think we have to stay strong on. You know, starting off with keeping the whole building, do we know what the demo costs are gonna be? Did anybody, did, do we see any numbers on that, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, before it was about a mil, a little over a million, but.
That was from several years ago, yeah.
Probably more.
We have the numbers, I just don't remember them exactly, Bob.
Okay. All right, I, I, I just think it's something we can't let slip by at this point, and I commend you for getting deferrals and things like that, but. And who knows, maybe when the structural assessment report is done. We'll find out that it's so wrought with problems, you really can't save the whole building, you can only just save the facade or something.
Yeah, it would not be an understatement to emphasize the, the degradation that has occurred on the site. Red, you know, there's a tree growing out of the turrets, you know, roof collapsed in parts of it, so. What's more interesting to find out is what the foundation shape is in and how that might influence the, the further reuse of, of how much of that building. But it's actually not, not a operable shell that we're starting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other, what, what comments?
I just wanted to mention, having been and currently involved in adaptive reuse projects and watching. An epidemic of old stone churches being torn down in the city of Philadelphia because the art studies has been slowly pulling back. Unfortunately, these, these buildings are expensive to adaptably reuse and. Private funding and private development is, is a huge aspect of it, however, none of them are successful without. Public incentives or funding involved in those projects to maintain or to maintain that building stock. So I, you know, I think that's gonna have to be a big part of the formula here, it's not just being all common private development. With that, it'll be a public comment. Can take it a second. I received an email, Scott and I received an email from Sid Alzov, who's been involved, I know she's sent several emails to both Scott and me over the. Last few months, she wrote, she would not have it be online or here, so she wrote an email saying, I deeply appreciate the fairness. Of Scott France's April fourth Aerie Street Prison Presentation for the Board of Commissioners. At that time, we lay out a plan for the withdrawal, several issue permit application, the launching of a condition, conditions assessment. And the subsequent issuance of an R F E I. Mr. France made a point of noting that meaningful community participation as well as transparency will be a hall, will be hallmarks. Of the effort as it unfolds over the coming months. To that end, I want to suggest that M C P C website include an Aerie Street Prison Update TAP on his project page. That's our comment, so with that, I'll take any other couple of comments, anybody in the room, staff or anybody? Anybody online?
A couple of things that, and I've, I've mentioned both work, but I think are opportunities. There is the Norristown Arts Hill Group that has been in existence, Doug Zeiler, your main architect, he was one of the people writing. He's been a part of that for many years, and I feel like they could play a role, I couldn't hear everything he said, but it's the doll set. But anyways, I think they could have some meaningful engagement in the process. And the other really important thing that I've heard is the post-op risk may not. That that may not be their forever, and there's the possibility, and that being right across the street, I think that's an important part of. What, what happens here, you know, there could be some synergy between those two future uses. The other thing, Gary was mentioning is really important is the interpretive element, it kind of goes along with what Bag was saying. Providing something for the public, the public good, whether it be an art museum or a gathering space or a music hall or whatever. I, I feel like that eventual RFP, there ought to be some give and take. An opportunity for the developer, but for that opportunity, also giving a public good. And whether it be helping payback museum or interpretive element or, I don't know, anyways.
Olivia, I see your hands raised, can you please unmute yourself, give us your name and municipality, resign.
Thank you, Olivia Brady from Norristown Municipality, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this. As many of you know, I've been involved in saving this building for a fairly long time, and I appreciate all of the work that has been done to it. Thank you, Scott, for your comments about the fact that the planning commission was distraught that the building was gonna be torn down. I think this is such an iconic structure in Norristown that its removal should have sparked that kind of a feeling. I wanna stress that it is the, my feeling and many of the feelings of the other advocates for this building. That we are looking towards a building that will create a destination for the county seat. I think it's important that the county seat have this as a spark possibly to further economic development for the municipality of Norristown. And I think an use of an art museum or other kind of destination would be key for the structure. So thank you so much for the opportunity to express my feelings on this and for the work that you're continuing to do on this.
Thanks for your interest, any other public comment? And anybody else?
I will look forward to continued updates, I think it's a highly charged topic, you know. Best interest to the county to see through it's first, and so thank you.
Last formal agenda item is the Norbert Borough Planning Update, it's in, so. They don't have to mention anything about prisons, active transportation planning.
Well, no, I actually have to mention, actually have to mention.
So recently, Norbert Row and the, or, my name is Tim Salby, I'm a senior community planner. Or for Montgomery County Planning Commission, and I am the, of the communities I am contracted to work with is Norbert Row. We recently just renewed our contract with Norbert. And basically, we're gonna just go over a quick recap of where Norbert is, what's its current situation, some of the planning work we've done. And then proceed into what's currently going on and then what the future holds for this upcoming contract. So. So Norbert is located in the far south end of R Fine County, it is served by the. Set the main line and is basically the donut hole to the donut that is Lower Merion, so. Its neighbor is only Lower Merion and, and so, but essentially what it is. Is basically that old-school borough of. Sorry, I lost my train of thought, it's the old-school borough being surrounded by the township. Additionally, our, our Norbert has seen a slight population increase over the past few years, originally dipping down. Once was the high of the mid-five thousands down to about forty-five hundred where it sits now as of the recent census. Some of the employment patterns for the area, there is a large demographic that leaves the community to go to work. When we were working on the active transportation plan, we found this to be a lot of people are commuting from Norbert to University City. Which kind of matches up with the educational services and healthcare and social assistance is making up a large percentage of the community. Additionally, there are professional scientific technical services, finance and insurance and retail trade that also make up a decent, decent amount of the employment. Norbert has, is. Norbert has. Norbert has a median household income of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, which is just above the county's a hundred and seven. So it's, it's really a representative of the median that is the county. And but also kind of serving as that first ring suburb to Philadelphia. So the big thing about Norbert is that as a part of it being that donut hole, it kind of shares its downtowns. It has two core downtowns, one of which is directly shared with Lower Merion, and the other one is a little bit shared. So you can see the Montgomery Avenue one, which is right there, and then the, there's a little bit of mixed use in this portion of Lower Merion. But it's mostly have for have where the key downtown that Norbert likes to promote with their. With several items, including the Dickens Festival in December. But if you notice, a lot of it is single-family detached twins, or twins or duplexes, it's small lot. It's really like your small lot, turn of the century development based around the rail line. So then this continues to match up with that where you have single-family, single-family detached making up a large majority of it, along with your twins. Along with your single-family attached, your two-unit, four-unit buildings, kind of all just a good blend. That reflects that turn of the century development pattern. And then one last item, which is, like, it, it really is, as you can tell by the land use, developed. Or it's been developed to its capacity of all of its land has found a use for the community. So recently, we've, we've been contracted with the community for some time. But recently, we've done work such as their two, two, twenty sixteen form-based code, their twenty eighteen comprehensive plan. And we assisted with their twenty twenty-one parking study task force, which they analyzed some of their parking buildings. We've also provided continued support in linking them with our Commerce Department for economic development. Assisting them with housing data as they've been, as they request, along with attending planning commission meetings and supporting them for two-four-seven reviews. So the more recent work that we've done, so in the twenty-one, twenty-three contract, which was mostly driven by Chloe. We designed an A D U ordinance, we created a green building ordinance, and we provided updates to their historic district overlay, their zoning and their Sado. We're gonna talk about that in a bit, and then our current and future work is going to be more along their active transportation plan, downtown business development. Affordable housing and traffic. is going to be more along their active transportation plan, um, downtown business development, affordable housing and traffic. So kind of discuss some of the more recent accomplishments. So as a part of their climate action plan, they, does it, they, um, they wanted a green building plan to be put, or a green building regulations to be put in. So as a part of this, it's a conditional use. So anytime someone wants to seek to build higher than the permitted, um, than the permitted height, wants to seek out a additional use, um, what Norbert has done is they've stuck a condition, conditions onto it where you have to, for example, provide bike parking. Um, you have to figure out ways to, um, you can use like a green roof, you can, you have to seek out alternative power. Uh, you don't have, or you are dissuaded from using, um, gas flying hookups and are preferred more towards electric. Um, additionally, we've assisted with, like I said before, the zoning and historic district. Kind of what happened was the historic district and the form based code came out separately. And it's over time, they, um, the county has been helping them align the two. So where they are supportive of each other and rather than conflicting. Um, additionally, we, additionally, we helped them pass a A D U ordinance to help encourage accessory dwelling units, um, in their backyard. At this time, um, none have come online yet. So the pictured one below is from a similar town called Asbury Park in New Jersey, um, where you had the garage apartment kind of setback from the primary structure. Um, some of the more recent developments, so this was also in the last time we had discussions of the contract was six fifty Montgomery Avenue. Um, this is going to be, uh, twenty five residential units and twenty five thousand square feet of retail space. Um, it's going up. It's currently going up on the corner of Meeting House Lane and Montgomery Avenue. Um, yeah, below is the picture, right? There's the picture I took on Monday. So just to kind of get a context of what was kind of proposed and what's coming up. Um, additionally, there was thirty two Sabine Avenue. Um, this was once a single family home setback from the Sabine Ave. It is now being converted into a twin, um, set towards the, or set towards Sabine. And then there is one forty six Marion Avenue, which is a certain fun one because this is going from a single family, large lot, um, residential unit to five units, including a twin involved. Um, and if you notice, you are looking at that correctly. That is the house that is depicted here. So they're going to be, as a part of this project, they're moving the house from right there to over to the right. Um, which apparently was a fun discussion if, if you want some, uh, question, ask a question about, sure.
All of that, not right now.
So now what is happening now? So first, um, the county as a part of the, um, as the part of some of the work that the Greater Valley Forge T M A's, uh, Bike More Drive Less Program, uh, developed the drive for an active transportation plan in both Lower Marion and Norbert. Um, so as both our contract communities with myself and Marley Vice, operating as the respective contract planners, um, it was joint, it, it was decided to make a joint effort. So essentially, the best way to put it is your transportation network doesn't end at your border. Whatever happens at that line continues on. So if you, if there's no cohesiveness, it becomes, it becomes a mess, especially like, especially if you are someone on a bike or if you're walking, if that sidewalk's up, it's where the sidewalk ends essentially. Um, so as a part of that, we partnered with them, or we partnered with Lower Marion to kind of start engaging the community and developing out a potential or the initial steps of a plan. So we engaged with some public outreach where we did some bike rides around some of the community. Um, we, this map right here is really identifying some of the, uh, transport, active transportation, both existing and, um, active transportation existing and planned infrastructure. So you see some of the, some of these lines are the Bike Monaco. Some of them are the, uh, Main Line Greenway, which is a project Lower Marion has been a driving force behind to provide an alternative path to, to essentially get from Ardmore all the way out to the, uh, Kinwood Trail and to, to, uh, City Avenue. So, and it cuts through Norbert. So again, this is a big portion of that joint planning. Um, so what, after we did some of the initial engagements, we uh, cited, we worked with the committee, the steering committee and we determined that the best way to kind of gauge this whole uh, program is through a community survey. So we reached out to the schools, we reached out to, uh, religious institutions, we reached out to the universities. Um, essentially any entity that had, uh, community connections that we could find. Um, we passed along the survey. Um, we got eighteen hundred responses, which was a wonderful thing and we will, I have to thank Norbert and Lower Marion for both, uh, taking it on themselves to help move it forward. Because what they did was they used their email server and basically just wrote an email saying, take the survey and had just the link in there. So it wasn't in a newsletter. It was straight to everybody that had access. And it resulted in probably some of the best data I've ever had the opportunity to work with. Um, so as a part of that, we let people draw on maps, um, and online, and this is kind of one of those items where we have somebody basically identifying paths I want to take. Um, areas that I find dangerous or areas of concern, um, and different little aspects of that people looking down at, um, Lower Marion and Norbert are able to see. Where could I, where could I theoretically bike or where do I want to bike? Um, and where do I want to get to? And we're using this along with several other, several other moments where we've rolled out a map and let people draw on it to kind of encourage people to provide, hey, we want to know where you want to go. Um, and we want to know where you want to bike, where you want to walk. So and with that in mind, we're now starting to work on the initial network. Um, uh, we actually met yesterday to kind of just hash out based on the data that we've been provided. Where do we think that people would be comfortable riding? Where do we think what roads, what opportunities exist out there that could be looked at more, um, in greater detail to help connect everybody to those places that we want to go, like Ardmore, like Bryn Mar, like, like, uh, City Avenue, like Norbert, um. So, but that's where we're at right now. We're working on that initial plan. The ideal is end of year, hopefully, for the final plan itself. Um, so, uh, and then there's one big development coming through and that is two thirty Havreford. Um, now, this is going to be a substantial development, taking up two whole blocks of Havreford Avenue. I don't know how many of you have been to Norbert. But that is a lot of, that is a lot of road, uh, that is a lot of their downtown, essentially. So this is a proposed, um, development, um, but it is twenty five units and fourteen thousand square feet of retail. It is right next to Norbert Station. And like I said before, it's the large mer, it's a large portion of that commercial road and which kind of brings us to the thing of what is next. Um, two thirty Havreford is going to be playing an important role, but at the, uh, commission meeting on Monday, what we decided to do with this year's contract or with this term's contract is be a lot more flexible in terms of what the community needs. Because if we set ourselves kind of goals based around that, those three years, the world can change a lot in three years. Um, so we wanted to, so we basically identified, here's a list of things that we kind, that we want to at least prioritize, but if anything more important comes up, we can drop everything and push that to the, the full top, uh, in terms of planning. So one of the key items was affordable housing. There we go. So, oh, don't know why I went to downtown business development first, but there we go. Affordable housing. Um, Norbert is one of the most expensive communities to purchase a home in the county, uh, when you use per square foot. Um, it, because all the homes are small, but it's also an incredibly desirable place. It is green. It is incredibly walkable, has a very quaint downtown. You're a train rider rate away from Philadelphia. Um, and it's now kind of, those pressures are starting to be felt and the current members of the council, along with current members of the planning commission have expressed it, um, here and there that there needs to be some way to start attack, tackling affordable housing. And their recent A D U ordinance is a step in the right, that right direction where you are kind of encouraging that smaller scale homes, which will, um, commit, which will be cheaper to develop, but also demand less rents. Um, and also they want to seek ways to improve infill opportunity and identify some additional development, uh, development opportunities for housing, uh, using the zoning in the cell though. Um, and the big thing that we cut, that they want to do is kind of look for opportunities for money um, and ways to incentivize affordability, um, through all different kinds of methodologies. But the big thing that we want to talk about is learn from others and be a leader. Now, Norbert is very small. It does not have a very large housing market. So if it does anything towards affordability, it may not be able to fully put its thumb on the scale. So you're, it won't be the driver of affordability for the county. But what it can do is it can learn from other places in the Commonwealth that have adopted some means of affordability and then it can be a leader. So essentially, it does not have to be the one carrying the, that housing unit rate that's necessary to start driving affordability, but it can be the community that sets forth saying, we want some level of affordability. Let's do it. Let's then show our neighbors how to, or how to adopt things that we have. Um, and then back to the two thirty Havreford, it is essentially a fulcrum, a turning point, a hit, basically, the future of the downtown is heavily built around what this development will be. Um, it is, like I said before, it is significant, it is a significant portion, it is a significant number of retail, but is a generational redevelopment or development project. And how it is interacted with, how, how it is managed, um, with the community will define essentially the, essentially the borough for the next twenty to thirty years. Um, so one of the things they want, um, as a part of the downtown business development is kind of find a downtown manager. Um, we have a commerce department here at the county, but it's not, it's, does not have the capacity to really help manage downtowns. So we're going to be helping them assist, or assist them in finding somebody that can eat maybe a day or two out of the week move forward on just improving downtown, connecting everybody, connecting the businesses with the, with the borough staff and just finding ways to encourage certain kinds of businesses, encourage certain, um, certain benefits for the community. Um, and additionally, we, we've really identified, uh, the Norbert Industrial Development Authority as an opportunity to kind of start engaging with. It is a, um, authority that meets quarterly in the community that has access to financial, uh, or essentially low interest loans and other financial tools that the borough could use towards development. And then any additional land development, um, policy and financing opportunities. So. Then, um, one of the big things that came out of the active transportation plan and multiple discussions is Montgomery Avenue. Uh, over the years, it remains a major issue for the borough. It is a, is a road owned by Lower Marion. Um, there are uses on both sides of it that kind of reflect the development, but it's, but in the active transportation plan is identified as a high stress road that many people want to either avoid, or if they want to get to it, it is difficult. Um, and it's really going to come down to seeking, using the active transportation plan as that first joint effort to now move into another joint effort with Lower Marion and try to encourage a collaboration again to attack, which is, which is essentially another, which is one of the many Lower Marion downtowns, but Norbert's second downtown, that major commercial corridor. Um, essentially, we, they want to see if we can collaborate on land use regulation. So whatever is developed on one side reflects the other. And they want to see how we can really, uh, make those, make that active transportation plan and any saldo adjustments to make it a more welcoming street. Uh, as you can tell, it's pictured in the background where it's, um, just a constant flow of vehicles, um, and very narrow sidewalks. So we want to kind of look what can be done from there. Um, next is traffic coming, a big issue that, um, multiple times gets brought up. And this is again, the active transportation plan coming into play is cut through traffic into their neighborhood. Uh, so we want to use whatever we get from the transportation plan and move it forward. And we want to design, uh, more detailed layouts for some of the intersections in the block. Now, the active transportation plan is covering both Norbert and Lower Marion. So it's not going to be able to do a intersection by intersection, street by street drawout of what is required. So we could easily move in the future using the active transportation plan recommendations, identify specific designs and specific implementations that can be done on some of its streets. And continue to find more, uh, funding opportunities beyond what the active transportation plan offers. So. And then lastly, was there five A zoning and recodification? A zoning code is always under construction is probably the best way to put it. Um, so recently there was a project that came forth called, uh, one nineteen Nor- North Essex Avenue. Um, the issue was, it was a, it was a four, it's a designed four unit building that had three units in it. Um, the owner wanted to convert the first floor to a dentist's office. It's in the five A district. So this is in downtown. So it's a block away from Havreford Ave. Um, but it ran into the issue where the way the, um, the way the form based code worked was certain uses are only allowed in certain building types and it fit a building type that that use was not allowed in. So we, we went back and we were like, all right, this makes sense because one of the key things from the comprehensive plan is to encourage, um, to essentially encourage the redevelopment of existing structures to preserve them, but also, um, encourage different, a variation of uses. So if someone wants to put a dentist's office in um, the downtown, they can. It's just more along the lines of now we need to relook at this again and see how the code interacts with what the plan demands. Um, additionally, we want to also look at how we can incorporate affordable housing as a part of this recodification and how five B Montgomery Avenue can work with it. So those are the big five items. Um, we're again, going to be flexible with the, with the borough to see what it wants to prioritize in what order. And if anything ever comes up that's more important, we're able to be more flexible, um, in terms of its completion. So. But yeah, that's it. Uh, any questions or?
What's the status of the two thirty Havreford Avenue development site?
So it was, it was, I believe the, uh, prelim final was approved by the commission in March. Um, it is set to go to council. Um, it was supposed to go, I think, it may be going this month or next month. The last I heard was they, the information session for the council was canceled for May. Um, but I can get more information about that, but the last.
Just, it's, it's a goal essentially if council approves him.
Yes.
A lot of stuff going on for such a small community.
Yeah.
Yeah. Lot of labor. Has, um, has there been any public feedback regarding that two thirty Havreford project?
Oh, yes. Um, so how long has that project been proposed, Chloe? Twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen?
Um, maybe not quite that long ago, but it's been in a conversation for, there has been a lot of public feedback. And it's been really interesting, like the whole, so that, that side of Havreford Avenue, some of the buildings, when we did, first did the historic district, um, there was a lot of discussion about whether to even include them or not, or not. A lot of them are these one story uh, buildings that are from the nineteen twenties, but they weren't, as I understand it, built to be permanent necessarily. They were like, let's put up some kind of temporary storefronts here and they've lasted and that talking to, sorry, I'll try not to give a really lengthy answer to this question. Some of the people who have rented those buildings and had stores in them came out publicly to say, we should demolish this and build something else, right? So they did end up getting included in the historic district, but the developer got an okay from the harbor that I think has been actually okay now to get rid of them. Like they have a lot of termite damage. They're not in good shape. So the public, the public input on this whole development has been really complex because there certainly was a contingent of like, don't knock down our downtown and build some new ugly thing, right? That, that was there. Um, but there was also, you know, a number of people who felt like there was an opportunity here for something better than these one story, um, crummy buildings that were there, including people who had used them as stores. There's also a number of vacancies on that corridor. So there was concern about like, well, this giant construction project that's going to be years long, is that going to be damaging to the, um, the business environment? And then like, what's the new development going to look like? And Norbert has a lot of regulations in place to ensure that the new development kind of looks good. And they, they were talking with the developer about that and a lot of renderings are required. But I would say overall, the public sentiment was fairly in favor of this, but lots of discussions with a lot of people attending. They had some special meetings, planning commission last year to just let everybody come. They had some special meetings, planning commission last year to just let everybody come and have their say about the project.
Probably has more uh planners per square.
There are a lot of planners that live in Narberth and architects, so many architects, we like architect.
It's the landmark of fifty years of a blue, it was a blue collar.
Yes.
Community within Lower Marion and it's now become.
And it's now the most expensive place.
Really.
Or not.
Wonderful story.
Foot and just overall in that entire county.
Any other questions for the timber code? Bob, Obed or anybody?
No, no questions, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I think it's a great presentation, very uh, very clear, very well presented.
Very brief version, uh, staff update, we have a new county planner starting on May twentieth, Austin Mosby, who uh. You can see him, you may remember him, he was an intern here uh last year.
Yeah.
And is finishing up his uh degree this year. Uh, so uh excited to have him join us.
Yeah.
Uh, that fills out in section of the county plan.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we have three open positions, uh still, two of those are, I think, uh, close uh to, to billing. And the other one is the newest uh opening, so I think, you know, there's no, uh, we should be getting a good application, but. So I'm again dangerously feeling optimistic about that, you know, so. And that's, that's when tragedy strikes.
Uh, so.
Say that, oh my god.
Sorry. Um.
Let me get on.
I'll be all.
Everybody's in Eeyore.
Staff maybe I'll turn on, turn the other side and be all. Um, month of twenty fifty, uh, so finally making some progress here, we have a full advisory committee.
For the most part, we have issued invitations, received acceptances and a handful of, of polite declines. Uh, but most of them accepted. Uh, we're wrapping up the, the final co-chair positions that we're seeking uh from two of those members. And hope to have that uh finished this week. And we're planning on the kickoff meeting uh towards the end of June, a couple of dates we're working with the commissioners on right now. Uh, so look for that to uh go into full swing. Meanwhile, the citizen lab, the Monaco Engage site is up, we've been uh, not, not too vocal about it, but that will change. Uh, as well, so again, a soft launch, but that it is technically available on, on the website.
Needs a little work, ink a little.
Needs a little work, um. And, and uh, working on that, so uh, yeah, stay tuned and uh we'll, we'll have plenty to announce uh for the next uh two months. And then uh APA award nominations, uh we did submit some for the Salderton revitalization plan. Uh, we are supporting, I probably shouldn't say the name because they may not be aware, but a nomination from the, at the regional level. Uh, for a longstanding uh uh planner, uh who has been a very important and lives in Monaco. Uh, for distinguished service awards or supporting that nomination. And then APA also has great places program, which uh has two categories this year where they award transformative places as well as. Another one, which is basically just great, great places. And these are not necessarily conference oriented as far as the awards, but they come out to the community and it's just a way of, of providing a lot of good. Goodwill and promotion of, of doing the right thing and having uh good results. Uh, so we are working to nominate uh Schwensville as a great place with the work it's done. Uh, with this uh Borough Hall and Meadow Park and all along, and we've, we've been a big part of that. Twenty forty program as well as uh uh encouraging Concha Hocken uh to be a transformative place. Uh, everything that's happened there, but the long term, the waterfront, transportation. Um, and, and they've been going on there. Uh, so those are currently on our agenda. Uh, a different award, but I do want to also make, make sure you're aware of the Montgomery Awards. Our own awards uh still are open for submissions for nominations. They close uh May twentieth, uh so there's still time, if you've been thinking of reaching out to someone or encouraging someone or making a nomination yourself. It is not too late, we definitely would like to uh get a few more in before the uh. The deadline closes. Um. One thing on the events list that went out yesterday, uh just be aware of the uh Back Fight to Work Day. Uh, if, if you were thinking of joining us for that, uh, as of this morning, it is not scheduled to happen as it was promoted. Um, there's been a number of conflicts and, and G B F sponsors that is rethinking their approach. They've been doing it the last ten years, it's been a great event, uh but. Uh, the twenty twenty four version will likely uh be pulled back, so ignore that as far as the events list goes.
Well, there's another event on that, May seventeenth, if you're interested in the Wayne Center in Newark County. Um, there, they do their own little one day, um. Uh, planning, um, all, uh, to get all your four required um C M credits. And um, Matt Hope and I will be out there doing a rehab, a redo of the ethics fund that involves some sparing ethics. So just case you want to make a trip to York County, you can sign up for that steps.
Did you get to say theory on that?
Yes, well, it, 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 that thing, it's, it's, well, it's not changed.
You have to read it like four times on the stand?
Yes. No, so anyway, it was, it was what we did at the conference.
See, I'm sure everyone acted out.
Yes.
Um, and then I also wanted to report back uh briefly, the Housing and Affordability Summit was held on April twenty ninth. Uh, the commissioners hosted that at Norman D Farms. Uh, as far as an event goes, it was very successful, uh we had a lot of positive feedback. Uh, pulled a lot of things together without a hitch and a great team behind it to do that. Uh, lots of work coming out of it, lots of follow up to occur. Uh, some announcements were made as far as uh county uh driven projects and funding of projects. Uh, much a wish towards the homelessness situation and on the affordability front, really. Really a call to arms, so Jim Ollman made some very strong statements about how they're, what they're hoping to work with municipalities and, and. And convene all together on, on moving the needle on affordability, so as planning commission will be involved with that. We will be offering services uh to local municipalities, contract and not for um doing a housing audit. Uh, or, or providing guidance on what is planned, whether they might uh assist. So. I just want to mention that and thank you for the uh upfronts of the events last week, uh there was also Lower Marion had its mainline greenway. Uh, improvements with uh G B F, I was, I attended that with Marley Vice and uh Asia Turner. It was also a great event, as well as our boroughs association. With adding a plan, so uh a couple of weeks ago in Havre. That's all I.
Any uh party comments from anybody, board members? We are adjourned.
I thought monkey, so you're a little bit.
Thank you.
I didn't say that the Montgago reporting award documents will be presented in the March, May twenty third.